We'll call this meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Salem for Monday, February 24th to order if the recorder will call the roll.
Vice Chair Kazer.
President.
Commissioner Anderson's absent and in his place is Guest Counselor Jackie Heeby, Commissioner Nanki.
Here.
Commissioner Leung.
President.
Commissioner Osik.
Here.
Chair Hoy.
Here.
Commissioner Nordike.
Here.
And Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
All right, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we proceed into the regular agenda, we need to elect a vice chair. Counselor Osik, do you have a nomination?
I nominate Counselor Kazer.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to nominate Counselor Kazer. Are there additional nominations? And we'll close those. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
That was an aye supporting, correct Counselor Lewis?
That is correct.
Great. We have a little bit of a lag, so you almost voted no. Counselor Kazer, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
We have no additions or deletions to the agenda.
All right, thank you. And we do have one person signed up under public comment, so Connie Griffiths, you'll come up and address the Housing Authority. As a reminder, you have three minutes. Please speak directly into the microphone. We do have a portable mic if you'd prefer.
You want me to talk out loud? Anybody here?
Hold on, you have to be on the microphone or they can't hear you on the TV.
Oh, thank you. Save me this.
Yeah.
Oh, cool, I like you guys. Hello, good evening. You know, a lot of you know me. I'm Ms. Connie's Children's Foundation and I'm here to tell you, I'm your national disaster. You know I am. The homeless were just declared a disaster. I have been invited and I just came from your state Capitol. Can you believe it? Your Paul Evans, your state representative, are now in session and you're not prepared for a disaster. You got me. And you just declared the homeless a disaster. You keep throwing money at your problem, you're just wasting the shame game and the blame game. You already got the resources there. Close the churches, they don't want it. You're not getting the job done. And you know, they're not all in my head or I'm real crazy and I'm not. I'm here for you. I'm Command of Europe. I had a stroke. I have spent '77, '78, '79, '83, '84, you tell me you know there's no communist wall because I've been tortured so. They burned the nerve in my spine, I don't know how I'm standing here talking to you tonight, but you're unprepared. We are at war. I am your commander. And all those homeless and all you vets out there, you know, I'm here for you. I am here for your support. But I want a full-time, 24-hour in-and-out processing center. I'm your navigator and Paul Evans put that out there. Don't turn back the law. Lawlessness is unacceptable. I'm in your Oregon parks, hey, I'm here to tell you, 70 percent of the crime rate is now against the elderly. They picked on the wrong old lady. And I'm here to be your new HUD Commissioner too. They asked me to come out of retirement. You guys get ready because I'm here and you need me. And you don't have to like me because if I have to ask you to do the job, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to have to go home and I ain't good enough. And you better believe that wrong. I moved eight of your camps, no incidences, and with the police, I built your police and I'll be there when they celebrate. Now, lawlessness is unacceptable. You don't lower your standards. Oregon's always been clean. Statesman Journal, December 23rd, 2018. I'm your bulldozers. I'm 28 years excavating and that's how I take out the trash. You know, you guys got to get with it. You're throwing money at the problem, you're shaming them. I got a way to bring them back and be part of your community. I want a full 24-hour coffee shop. You can't do it as a workforce because they serve me. You got a lot of slack in people, let's put them to work. I can motivate them and I resource everybody and I don't discriminate because that's my job. And I know you so good, so well. I told them, you ought to see the stuff I have on you.
Thank you.
And you know, I'm about to say this. And you know what?
Thank you, your time's up.
No, I'm going to tell you. You know what the state representative said to me as I walked out? He happens to be a major Air Force. Hey, want mine? You know what he said? Connie, this is your country. I'm here to remind you, I'm home, I retired here, and you need me and I'm so qualified. You guys go look me up everywhere. I want you to know who I am. Damn, I'm back.
Thank you.
If you can do the job better, you hire somebody else.
Thank you.
I can do it cheaper. Forty-seven million nine point nine.
Thank you, your time's up.
Thanks. A lot for sure.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on to the consent calendar. Counselor Kazer.
Thank you. Just one item on the consent calendar, item 3.1A, which are the draft Salem Housing Authority minutes from January 27th, 2020.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes. We have no public hearings, no special orders of business, so we are on to information reports. And I see that we have Ms. Rutherford and Ms. Oates here with us this evening. And I'm hoping that you will take this opportunity to talk about some of the efforts that the Housing Authority, as well as the City of Salem, are doing as it relates to homelessness and housing and sort of expand on what you've given us in writing.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Nicole Yous. I'm the Housing Administrator for Salem Housing Authority. And as you can see in the Program Management Report, our efforts continue with all of our regular housing programs and we continue to have excellent numbers in all of our properties.
Could you pull the mic a little bit closer?
Is that better?
And I want to remind everybody, actually, the TV folks asked me to remind everybody to be sure and speak directly into the mic because we have a person on the phone tonight, so it's especially difficult, so speak directly into the mic, not into the side of the mic. Get it within about three or four inches of your mouth and that'd be perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So tonight I wanted to talk about, on the front cover of your Program Management Report, is one of the things that the Salem Housing Authority does that not everybody is aware of. We have the Immediate Needs Station that was actually a collaboration effort with the Salem Police Department that is a location that we can have 24/7 access for police and fire to provide immediate needs for our homeless population or anyone actually that is in need of food, clothing, shoes, sleeping bags, or blankets, other items that may become at the immediate time, whether that's 2:00 AM or during our normal business hours. So we have that available. The Homeless Rental Assistance Team has actually been doing outreach efforts regularly in the Downtown Core. That includes the Arches area, the Rite Aid Nordstroms, and the Capitol Mall. During the course of all of the visits down there, they are handing out flyers for the Homeless Rental Assistance Program, asking if they can provide services, try to get them coordinated with the Arches Program, and have them vatted for, which is the Vulnerable Assessment Tool, in order to see if they qualify for our Homeless Rental Assistance Program. During the course of our visits, we've, on average, reached out to many individuals. However, we've only captured about three that have actually come to our offices to seek that help at each of those visits, for a total of about 12 individuals. Today, we were down there in efforts of trying to help with the coordination of the sidewalk cleanup. We were down there handing out trash bags, encouraging individuals to start thinking about the process to clear the Rite Aid sidewalks for the morning in hopes that this didn't come as a surprise, offer services in connection to the Arches Program, and just lend a helping hand or an ear to see what we can help do to provide resources. So with that said, we actually, with the Homeless Rental Assistance Program, it continues to, our efforts continue to grow. We're at, as indicated on there, 265 individuals have been served as of today. I think we're actually up to 270 now. We've rapidly been housing individuals lately, particularly due to the landlord outreach that's been out there and our community assistance and helping us with providing units for us to place these individuals and have wraparound case management. After we submitted our Program Management Report, the Salem Housing Authority received a check from the Willamette Valley Community Health, which was a grant awarded for 99, just a little bit over $99,000. That $99,000 is meant to support the HRAP program. And with that funds, we intend to hire a navigator for the Housing Authority that is going to focus on the Downtown Core and will work collaboratively with another outreach coordinator from the Arches Program. So we'll be teaming them up as a team to go in the downtown area and provide services. We've also received a private donation in the amount of $10,000, which is also helping our efforts and we greatly appreciate. So a little bit about the navigator position. It's intended to fill the gap between current case management and those who need additional services on the street. We feel this position will also help us in the long run in helping with accountability from the time we start our services on the street and having them case managed into our office and then residing into an apartment. So the other effort that the Salem Housing Authority has done recently is meeting with the Arches Program in regard to a targeted outreach specifically for the Downtown Core Our combined efforts with Arches would like to propose an effort based off the Built-for-Zero model that will incorporate outreach efforts that will focus on those individuals in the downtown Salem area. A preference list has been compiled as of today, and outreach efforts will focus on those individuals already identified on a preference list. Since this list is now compiled and closed to capture a date and time and need in the Salem Downtown Core, this has also been compiled in effort to close it before the announcement of this effort, not to attract additional individuals into the downtown area. The outreach efforts as of today have identified 70 individuals that will now meet a downtown Once identified, the higher scores individuals will go to an HRAP vadding program and the lower scores would be referred to in Arches, potentially off a tenant-based rental assistance. These services to clients will be quicker and more effective because of the cross-agency partnership between Salem Housing Authority and Community Action Agency, coordinated entry, existing memorandums of understanding, and our multi-agency effort. If you were to see the point-in-time count for Salem, it identifies three to four main blocks of the Salem area as a huge cluster for our homeless population. This is an opportunity for both of our agencies to combine resources and assist in a methodology that is recognized for case management. Both teams' efforts and resources will be leveraged to find permanent supportive housing solutions to a targeted outreach group. The effort will not end homelessness, however, it will be a new idea focused on collaborative efforts rather than continued management of the situation facing our city and citizens. This, however, is a voluntary program and we cannot force individuals to accept the services that might be available to them. So during these meetings, we have identified that our current fiscal year HRAP funding and the City of Salem tenant-based rental assistance funding can fund the majority of this program. There is additional funding source needed for this option and Salem Housing Authority, alongside its partner Arches, would ask the city to fund the allocation in the amount of $200,000. With this funding, both Salem Housing Authority and Arches can implement the program within one week of council approval for additional funding.
Kristin Rutherford, Urban Development Director, and if I could expand on this and clarify a couple of points. We've had the Housing Rental Assistance Program up and operating for a few years. It has not had a geographic preference. It's been based on assessments. We also have a program that comes through our federal entitlements where we are able to grant out funds to agencies within the community to provide tenant-based rental assistance. So what this new program is proposing is to bring these resources together to target needs within the downtown community. So as Nicole mentioned, over the last few days, based on individuals that have already been assessed and outreach that occurred today and over the last few days to identify people within the downtown community, a preference list was established. And it's the individuals that are on that preference list now that will be approached with the opportunity to use our Housing Rental Assistance Program funds and the tenant-based rental assistance funds to meet the qualifications for the HRAP program. So the Housing Rental Assistance Program, as you may recall, as we went through last budget year, we pulled the budget back to about half of prior year allocations because we didn't have enough housing units. So in the next few months, we're going to have housing units come online out of Redwood Crossings and we've got more private sector apartments that are now available. But we have used almost all of our current year's allocation for HRAP. So to have the resources needed to target and provide support with HRAP funds and match that with the TBRA funds, then we would need a little additional allocation for this fiscal year so that we can get out there and on the street quickly and start trying to assist people into housing.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, did you have some more additional comments?
No, I think Kristin covered what I wanted to say. I do, though, want to commend Nicole and the Salem Housing Authority and Arches for really responding very quickly to concerns we've heard from council, from the Salem Housing Authority Commission, and certainly from the public regarding assisting our neighbors who are unsheltered and are in the downtown. And I think this concentrated, targeted approach will be really effective and I do intend to recommend, at a later council meeting, the contingency transfer necessary to fund what Nicole just described for the balance of this fiscal year. And I will be recommending, as the Budget Committee and City Council considers the fiscal year upcoming budget, a return to, if not full funding, for HRAP, certainly in addition above the current $700,000, in order to continue this approach because we do have other areas within the city with numbers of homeless individuals where this type of targeted approach, navigator approach, would be really effective. It also, I realize it's an if, but if we do receive the state funding that's been set aside for Salem for a navigation center, the concepts that Nicole has talked about are a great jumpstart on that while we await state funding.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In regards to the immediate needs, on page one of the Program Manager Report, you were requesting donations. How do people find out what you actually need and where they can take it or they need to contact somebody to arrange?
Sure. So we actually can add on to our Facebook some sort of list that can identify those specific needs. But our most-wanted items are typically shoes and we don't ever seem to have enough of all the right sizes. But oftentimes, the police encounter individuals that are shoeless and we like to try to help out and make sure they are taken care of in that need. Other main items that we go through quickly, believe it or not, are undergarments and anything that helps keep them warm. So if there's polar fleeces or old jackets, then those are definitely items that we do. We do accept all those donations at the front lobby of the Housing Authority. Anything that we cannot use, we do donate to Helping Hands, which is a partner of ours in collaboration to help outfit individuals that are in need.
Excellent. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Rutherford. Did you have a comment before I go to Counselor Nordike?
Yes, just one other addition that I could make here, I suppose, under the Urban Renewal Meeting, and that's to address another concern and need within the downtown community, and that is the subject of restrooms. And just to share that we are getting cost estimates for repairing and reopening the Marion Square restrooms. There's quite a bit of work that needs to occur there, so we've got public works looking at that work in developing costs for us, along with operational costs, as well as cost estimates for a public lieu-type facility, to see if that may be suitable, and operational costs for that as well. And also doing some additional research into porta-potties. We've had challenges with vendors that would be willing to clean and service porta-potties, but we're continuing to explore those options as well.
Thank you. And as I understand the situation at Marion Square Park, the bathrooms were almost destroyed.
Yes.
Is that accurate?
That's correct.
So there's significant work that needs to be done there before they can be brought back online?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Nordike.
Great. Thank you so much and thank you for this report. This is very helpful. As I read through this report, it sounds to me like we are providing assistance in a wide variety of areas. There's the security deposit assistance, which gives funding for folks who struggle to make the 2,780 households. The Veterans Assistance Supportive Housing Programs with 68 vouchers. The Family Unification Vouchers. The Section 8 Moderate Rehabilitation Single Room Occupancy, which provides 26 rehabilitative rental units. And then, last but not least, HRAP. And it sounds to me like we've served up to 270 folks or so through HRAP. Is that right?
That's correct. And the individuals in those programs that you're listing out is about 8,100 individuals that we're assisting.
So is it fair to say that but for these programs, we might have hundreds more people who are homeless in our community?
With the point-in-time count, that information is correct, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Leung.
So I just had a few general comments. You mentioned that you had a 70 total who are listed on your preference list. Can you define what you listed as your preference?
So the list is actually, our team of outreach individuals went individual by individual that were found in the three to four block indicated in the point-in-time count as our cluster areas and the names were placed on the list. There is no prequalifications, there's nothing to say that we can actually get them through the whole qualification process. That is literally the names of individuals that were listed in the Downtown Core during the last probably month that we've been gathering this list.
And these were the individuals that were willing to speak with you then? So let's just say you went to somebody, they refused to talk to you, then you move on to the next person if they were willing to whatever assessment that you were doing with them?
So it's not really an assessment, is do you want your name added to a list that could potentially turn into a preference list? Most individuals did indicate they wanted to be on it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any final comments from staff? No? All right, we're seeing nothing further on our agenda, we are adjourned.
Call this meeting of the City of Salem Urban Renewal Agency to order. If the recorder would please call the roll.
Board Member Kazer.
Present.
Guest Counselor Heeby.
Present.
Board Member Nanki.
Here.
Board Member Leung.
Present.
Board Member Osik.
Here.
Board Member Hoy.
Here.
Board Member Nordike.
Present.
Board Member Lewis.
Here.
And Chair Bennett.
Here. Okay, any additions or deletions, Counselor?
No.
Nope, okay. Any public comment? No. Yeah, I think we have not had somebody this serious. That's what, that's my mistake. Okay. Okay, I don't have anyone signed up for public comment. Anyone want to address the Urban Renewal Agency? All righty.
Are we talking about the board and the city planning?
No, no, we're not. We're not. Consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second by Nanki.
Thank you. The consent calendar includes item 3.1A, the January 13th, 2020 draft Urban Renewal Agency Minutes; item 3.3A, fiscal year 2018, 2019 Urban Renewal Agency Financial Report; item 3.3B has been pulled, it will not be on the consent calendar; item 3.3C, consent release assignments between Safran Supply Company, Inc. and TV Safran Supply LLC; item 3.3D, extension of the Salem Convention Center Management Agreement. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Any discussion, comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Special orders of business, Counselor Nordike.
Thank you, Mayor. For 3.3B, I would just like to declare potential conflict of interest. I have a relative that has two relatives that have property on State Street. Great.
Need a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of item 3.3 to authorize the use of $80,000 of currently unallocated Riverfront Downtown Urban Renewal Area funds to fund completion of the State Street two-way conversion project.
Second.
Second by Kazer. I used to have a brief comment. I've been urging two-waying of State Street for, I'm thinking now, about 13, 14 years, so I'm just thrilled. It took 10 years to get two blocks and then just all at once, Mr. Fernandez, here it is. What's the, what's the story?
Just lack of funding, Mayor.
Just keep asking, is that how it works here?
Just lack of funding. Ms. Rutherford is putting down the money to the limits of the Urban Renewal District, the remainder is outside, so it awaits a future bond issue.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
And I'll abstain from voting.
Yeah, and, sorry. And I don't see any further, I do see further business.
I would like to use the opportunity with Ms. Rutherford, as we shared with the Housing Authority Commission, we're also, the Urban Renewal Agency is also working on programs to address concerns that have been shared by councilors and the public regarding the impacts of some individuals who are homeless. In addition to the restrooms that Kristin referred to during the Salem Housing Authority meeting, we're also working with Arches on proposals to expand the day center. Arches Day Center has recently expanded its capacity and now, I should have used a different word, we're working with Arches on extending the hours and the days. And we will have a proposal for council, depending upon outcome of an issue on the City Council agenda, we will certainly have proposals for council's consideration regarding how to assist Arches make the best use of a day center that has been assisted by Salem Urban Renewal.
Okay, very good. Anything, Ms. Rutherford? Okay, excellent. Okay, then we are adjourned. Call this meeting of the Salem City Council to order. If the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Kazer.
Present.
Guest Counselor Heeby.
Present.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor Leung.
Here.
Counselor Osik.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Nordike.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Bennett.
Here. Okay, additions and deletions?
None.
Okay. Move on then, council and city manager comments. I have one. I had the opportunity to attend the Mid-Willamette Valley Council of Governments Dinner the other evening and Counselor Nanki was awarded the Gwen Van den Bosch Regional Leadership Award. It was presented, it's presented each year by the Mid-Willamette Valley Council of Governments to an elected official in Marion Polk or Yam Hill Counties who
the better of a job we can do to measure outcomes and to set appropriate goals, and to really focus on evidence-based solutions for a crisis that is really years in the making. So I encourage folks to follow the Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative. I see it as a group of problem solvers. Next, I went to the Marion Polk Food Share, and the Food Share's mission is to end hunger. But one of the things I didn't realize at first, that they also are a really key partner for preventing homelessness, because you see a lot of folks live paycheck to paycheck, and a lot of times you have to make those decisions between paying for rent and paying for food for your family. So through the 9 million pounds or so food that they have donated to the community recently, that has resulted in cost savings of $21.5 million, according to what their executive director told me. So when you think about that, that's $21.5 million that people were saved in money because they were able to take advantage of nutritious food. So they're really one of our great partners for preventing homelessness. And then, last but not least, I went to Center 50 Plus, which is our senior center. It's a great program, and it's a wonderful opportunity for seniors. And in touring that facility, they told me that they regularly serve meals to homeless seniors. And I just want to reiterate something that I've said before, that the seniors are one of the fastest-growing segments of our homeless population. Unfortunately, we have way too many people who are on fixed incomes, and all it takes is just one month to be a hair above that fixed income, and you might find yourself inadvertently joining the ranks of those without shelter. So I mention these because I see a lot of community support. I see a lot of community partners out there. And I know because of the things that Nicole Oats and Kristen Rutherford mentioned earlier, we already are keeping hundreds of folks off the streets, maybe more, but it's not enough, and there is more work to be done. We know we have a statewide crisis, and I'll just close because I know we have a full agenda, so I'll try to get through it quickly, Mayor. But we know the Oregonian reported that there was bipartisan support for approving millions of dollars to help with a statewide crisis. In a time when bipartisanship feels like an increasingly rare animal, it's exciting to see when the parties can get along and get behind a program that will address this crisis. And lawmakers from both parties agree that we have about 6,000 Oregonians sleeping outside in communities all around the state. And that's a... I'm taking that directly from the Oregonian. They mentioned a Republican from Bend, Bend Republican Sherri Helt, a former member of their Bend School Board, testifying in support of the bill, noting that when Bend tried to open a warming center for homeless people, when the temperatures got down to 12 degrees, they were unable to find a place to do so. So clearly, this is a crisis that is impacting the entire state. I'm really encouraged to see all the participation here tonight. I look forward to hearing from each and every one of you. My one ask is, let's treat each other with civility and recognize that the only way out of this crisis is by working together. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Why don't we invite up Kat Van Amerson, Director of the Salem Public Library Foundation, and Gina Johnny, Board President of the Salem Public Library Foundation. Whereas libraries provide free access to all and are invaluable resource, and whereas members of our community make more than 600,000 visits to the Salem Public Library each year and borrow over 1.3 million items, and whereas the Salem Public Library Foundation supports our public library by providing resources to support literacy, promote arts and culture, build collections, and fund library improvements beyond those covered by tax dollars, and whereas, as an addition to the public's approval of an $18.6 million bond measure in 2017 to address safety and security issues at the library, the foundation has chosen to fund numerous additional projects to further enhance patrons' experience at the newly renovated library, which is slated for completion in the summer of 2021. You guys can't wait. Whereas the special pizzazz projects include floor-to-ceiling windows in the library's west side, a new stairwell enhancing visibility and movement within the space, expanding teen scenes so the third floor becomes dedicated to youth services, and relocating the discovery room with additional adjacent storage, natural light, and an exceptional view. Now, therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, Oregon, do hereby proclaim February 25, 2020, to be Salem Public Library Foundation Day, and encourage residents to express their sincere gratitude to the Salem Library Foundation for providing the funding that will make the newly renovated library a more beautiful and functional facility for all to enjoy, dated this 24th day of February 2020. Signed, Chuck Bennett, Mayor. Congratulations. Thank you.
Good evening. As Mayor said, I'm Gina Johnny, the Chair of the Salem Public Library Foundation. And as you know, since its inception in 1981, the mission of the foundation is to support enhancement projects, programs, and services with the Salem Public Library. In an effort to meaningfully participate in the retrofit project at the library, the foundation requested enhancement projects at the library that would impact long-term improvements that are not funded by the bond. Four projects were presented, and four projects were approved by the foundation board. Although we don't have final costs right now, we believe that we will be donating something in the neighborhood of $500,000. And the foundation is... We, as a board, are thrilled and grateful for being able to participate in making our library someplace everybody wants to come to. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could comment?
Yes.
As a member of the library project committee oversight group, it really was painful to have to cut some of those projects out of what was going to be a really remarkable program. And we were so happy when you stepped forward with these... With this offer. It really made... It makes all the difference in what our library is going to be in the future. And I just want to give you my personal thanks. I know... I don't know if Counselor Lewis will be able to comment on the phone, but I know he feels the same way. He's on the committee with me, and it really is remarkable. This is really a huge thing that you're doing, and I don't want it to go overlooked. So thank you very much.
If I might... If I might just... I agree with everything Counselor Hoy said.
Is he done? You done, Jim? Okay.
Yeah. Hopefully, you can hear me, but I simply want to say I agree with everything Counselor Hoy said.
Great. Thank you. Just a second here. Okay. It's time for public comment. As you can see, we have a substantial number of folks who are going to comment. I'm going to call you up three at a time. When the red light... When the yellow light goes on, you have two minutes... You have spent two minutes, one minute left. Red light goes up, just stop talking, or I'll just interrupt you and ask you to stop talking. We don't... We're not going to add on because it's going to take a couple hours to run through this list as it is. Chad Elliott and Jack Elliott, followed by Jean Hendren, Aaron Turpining, and Teresa Horkey. Both of these are open, so you can kind of line up, and we'll move on through these. And if you recall, just introduce yourself and your ward or your address, if you know your ward number or generally can give an address. Okay. Jack?
Hi. My name is Jack Delud Elliott, and I live in Ward 7. My address is 3482 El Duato, Loop South, 97302 Salem, Oregon. Good evening, members of the city council and Mr. Mail. Tonight I am here because I think we need to do something about our downtown homeless problem. I don't know all the answers, but I still don't feel comfortable going downtown, even with my mom. I think we need to do something about this. I used to love going downtown, but now I'm not even comfortable going to the candy store. I love all city, but I think our downtown needs to be safer for families. Let's solve this problem. Thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you, Jack. The other... I know this will be hard to do, but I'm going to ask you not to applaud. If you wouldn't mind, we'll just move right on through these. Jack, did you want to?
No.
Nope? You all done? Chad, thank you very much. Jean Hendren?
After hearing your plan, I've had to take all the scathing remarks out of my remarks. I'm sure some people appreciate that, and others probably won't.
Your name is?
Jean Hendren.
Where do you live?
I live in West Lynn, Oregon.
Okay. Thank you.
I... My remarks are now just probably going to be over why we are coming up with this new plan to help the homeless. The sit-ly ban is not a multifaceted solution, but it sounds like you put a lot of more work into a multifaceted plan. Every study of homelessness recommends a shelter first. But when you choose to remove the last refuge of the homeless, their tents with a sit-ly... Lost those remarks. I must have had something scathing in there. Sorry. With a sit-ly ban, you will force them to lose whatever belongings they have managed to secure. The tickets and rests and monetary judgments the poor are subjected to only create more barriers to rental units. The shelters I know of do not have enough staff to allow all the beds to be filled. They are depending on volunteers. They need paid staff. The danger of illness or injury scares all volunteers. The people who do this work despite the dangers deserve to be paid. I spent two days at home this week because I have injured my back lifting cases of water helping the unsheltered population around the mall stay hydrated. I also pass out trail mix and smuckers and crustables almost every night because people need to be told one way or another every day that someone cares about them. Sometime in the night this week while home, I received a call from a young man who had gone to Salem Hospital for help with his suicidal ideation. He had been given medication but was released against his will and informed that if he returned, he would be trespassed. He called me in tears, explaining what had happened and cried, "I don't want to live anymore. Nobody gives a shit about me." It took me a while to get him calmed down and determine that his mood swings were being caused by a failure to obtain his psychotropic medications, which is when I remembered he had been trying to get those medications for weeks, and I was party to at least one conversation with Safeway about obtaining the drugs, which they claimed could not be filled. That's Safeway because they blah, 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 blah. So I let him down just as much as anybody else did because I realized that I failed to recognize that he could not navigate that system alone. These people whom we call homeless have been let down by government services, medical services, social services, the VA, the SSA, the hospital, Arches, Hope, the union gospel missions themselves, you and me. Punitive actions are a pipeline to criminality for people who are so desperate, they are willing to consider death as an alternative to the suffering that has been afflicted on them. They would rather go to jail than spend cold nights on the streets without shelter, but you cannot afford to keep them in jail either. I'm leaving for Texas on Wednesday to tour the self-managed tent city there and several other homeless projects around the Austin area, courtesy of a half-sibling I have there, and I am anxious to share any information I pick up there with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Aaron Turpining, followed by Teresa Horkey, followed by Jim Boo.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. Counsel, Aaron Turpining, 500 Liberty Street, southeast. I'm here just to speak on behalf of the Downtown Advisory Board. Just wanted to relay what I'm hearing from the businesses downtown. I know many can't be here, and I've heard from a lot of them, so I just wanted to pass on some information. As you know, we reported not too long ago, in September, we did a open house where we sent out notification to all businesses owners and property owners to gather their input. And the resounding number-one issue that they answered the question, what is your biggest challenge, was homelessness. And when asked to prioritize how we spend the monies that the DAB makes recommendation on, cleanliness and safety rose to the top. So as you know, downtown, the Downtown Advisory Board's main purpose is to help improve downtown Salem, ensure that it's a welcoming, vibrant, active place, healthy for living, shopping and working. However, at this time, we are battling this future that we all want. We are battling a couple issues, perception and reality. The perception is growing that downtown is not a safe place, that downtown is dirty, and the perception is growing that businesses are leaving. The perception is growing in our community and the broader Willamette Valley that downtown is not a place you want to go to shop. And so that's a perception issue. It's not all reality. However, the reality that I am hearing from business owners is that they are having to clean up feces on a daily basis from in front of their doors and adjacent sidewalks. They're having to pick up more and more garbage on a daily basis from around their property. And this is the reality of the situation they face. As a community, we've invested millions of dollars over the years in downtown, things like our bridges, pedestrian bridges, conference center, parks, and all kinds of buildings around downtown. And I just want to say that, at this moment, the progress we've made downtown can be at risk, and we need to act. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Teresa Horkey?
Present, Mr. Mayor.
Hi.
Hi. My address is... I am one of your homeless residents that we are discussing this evening. In order for me to be here, I had to miss a night of work. I actually have a job. I am a consumer in the downtown area. I live in the downtown area. I understand where you're coming from, that we can't be out on the sidewalks.
These people whom we call homeless have been let down by government services, medical services, social services, the VA, the SSA, the hospital, Arches, Hope, the union gospel missions themselves, you and me. Punitive actions are a pipeline to criminality for people who are so desperate they are willing to consider death as an alternative to the suffering that has been afflicted on them. They would rather go to jail than spend cold nights on the streets without shelter, but you cannot afford to keep them in jail either. I'm leaving for Texas on Wednesday to tour the self-managed tent city there and several other homeless projects around the Austin area, courtesy of a half sibling I have there, and I am anxious to share any information I pick up there with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Erin Turpinning, followed by Teresa Horkey, followed by Jim Vu.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett, Council, Erin Turpinning, 500 Liberty Street, Southeast. I'm here just to speak on behalf of the Downtown Advisory Board. Just wanted to relay what I'm hearing from the businesses downtown. I know many can't be here, and I've heard from a lot of them, so I just wanted to pass on some information. As you know, we reported not too long ago, in September, we did a open house where we sent out notification to all businesses owners and property owners to gather their input, and the resounding number one issue that they answered the question, what is your biggest challenge, was homelessness. And when asked to prioritize, prioritize how we spend the monies that the DAB makes recommendation on, cleanliness and safety rose to the top. So, as you know, downtown, the Downtown Advisory Board's main purpose is to help improve downtown Salem, ensure that it's a welcoming, vibrant, active place, healthy for living, shopping and working. However, at this time, we are battling this future that we all want. We are battling a couple issues, perception and reality. The perception is growing that downtown is not a safe place, that downtown is dirty, and the perception is growing that businesses are leaving. The perception is growing in our community and the broader Willamette Valley that downtown is not a, a place you want to go to shop. And so, that's a perception issue. It's not all reality. However, the reality that I am hearing from business owners is that they are having to clean up feces on a daily basis from in front of their doors and adjacent sidewalks. They're having to pick up more and more garbage on a daily basis from around their property. And this is, this is the reality of the situation they face. As a, as a community, we've invested millions of dollars over the years in downtown. Things like our bridges, pedestrian bridges, conference center, parks, and all kinds of buildings around downtown. And I just want to say that, at this moment, the progress we've made downtown can be at risk, and we need to act. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Teresa Horkey?
Present, Mr. Mayor.
Hi.
Hi. My address is, I am one of your homeless residents that we are discussing this evening. In order for me to be here, I had to miss a night of work. I actually have a job. I am a consumer in the downtown area. I live in the downtown area. I understand where you're coming from, that we can't be out on the sidewalks. But if you work from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM at night, five nights a week, you're not able to go into a shelter because they fill up. So if you go there at like 11 o'clock at night because you just got off work, you're going to be outside anyways, and the only thing is a sidewalk to sleep on. The programs that we have to combat homelessness, to get into a housing, because I work, for granted, it is part-time, I do not qualify for it. I'm penalized because I work. So I have decided that the best thing to do for my family and myself is to leave the city of Salem and be done with the whole entire state of Oregon. Because you say, "Oh, we have these programs." Yes, you have many fine programs. You're having new ones. I would not qualify for any of them because I work. Some of our other homeless residents, they have some kind of income, whether it's SSI or disability, and again, they are also penalized for having some kind of income. And then shut off from trying to get into an apartment. Also, the cost of the apartments. I'm going back east. I can get a one-bedroom apartment for myself and my family for $600, whereas here in Salem, $600, you can get a room. If I want to rent a room for myself and my family, it only will cost $100 a month back east. They have resources there that I can call using my cellphone, and they will connect me to people that will help me get into housing. Why can't we do these things as well? We're talking about spending money for this program, spending money for that program, but you're not helping the ones that need the help. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Teresa, just a second. Teresa, I'm going to ask you again not to clap. You can clap and we'll stop. I, I want you to hear me. No more clapping, please. I'm just asking you can do the happy hands or whatever, but. Teresa, would you talk with Nicole Oats? Because some of the things you were saying, I think you may have some misinformation, and maybe we can help you out with housing, okay?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I went to the resources. I went to Arches. I went to Hope.
Would you mind talking with?
And I was told that because I work, I am unqualified.
And I sure understand that. Would you talk with our, Nicole, could you come down and talk with her for a minute? Thank you. Jim Vu?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett, councilors. Thanks for your time. My name is Jim Vu. I live in Ward Eight. I am also on the board for the Salem Main Street Association. We've, I'm coming here to chat and share with you the issues we've had of business downtown. And there's been a lot of fear on behalf of businesses, being able to put in the target in crosshairs and specific businesses that have been targeted for vandalism. Though Chad's been prosecuted, but that's the fear that we go out there. So this is one of being able to speak for many voices. I can't say I speak for all of them, but many voices. I'm not an advocate of making homelessness illegal. What I'm asking for is an expectation of behavior. Things that are happening right now, talking about the perception that Erin had referenced before, is both issues such as using the sidewalks as a bathroom, as a public drug use area, as well as a place where intercourse is taking place openly on our sidewalks. What the impact of is for businesses, that perception by many folks, and I read over 105 comments on the social media posts of, "I'm not going downtown anymore because it's not safe for my family. I don't feel safe." Whether or not that's true, that perception, that's hurting our businesses. What I can share with you is that the volume of folks that are coming downtown, it's hurting. And we've invested so much, we've worked really hard with Salem Main Street Association to build a vibrant downtown, and it's, it's been really hard. What I'm asking for is to be able to have an expectation of behavior. We have a social contract behind, behind by, and regardless of the living situation, ask that that behavior is enforced across the board. Specifically, an event that we put on with Salem Main Street is called On Your Feet Friday. Happens from May through September, second Friday of every month. And we have people come down, about 300 or 400 people that go around to eight checkpoints throughout downtown. Right now, I'm designing out what that map looks like for where the businesses are going. And what we have to ask is, for a lot of these people, it's the first time downtown in years, if ever, and if that's that first impression they have of downtown, do I say, "All right, we can go, everyone can go here, but just don't go North Marion," or "These are specific streets you can go on." What does that say about our downtown? We're trying to promote walking, going around to businesses, spending downtown, spending your time and money to support a vibrant downtown, which I believe is a reflection of the city. So, on speaking at behalf of businesses, please enforce a behavior expectation that all of us can abide by. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions? Zach Stone, followed by, Michelle, I can't read your last name. You're with Safe Sleep? Ah, good. Do you want to come on down? Patrick Carney?
Hello, my name is Zach Stone. I live in Ward Eight. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, and staff. I, and people who are struggling for their homes and their right to survive. Right now, I should be home with my kids, having dinner with them, talking about their day at school, getting ready to put them to bed. It's 7:00, but instead, I'm down here at the City Council meeting because I care about my kids, and I care about my wife, and I care about their protection and the future of the city. I don't want people struggling to survive in our town. We need to have something that they, or a place that they can go, get off the drugs, get help, get the love that they need, know that they are cared for, that we care for you. It hurts and breaks our hearts to see you guys sitting on our streets. We don't want you there. We want you happy in a home. We want you proud of the jobs that you do and the work and the money that you make to survive. We all have jobs. We've all had to learn how to survive and make money to survive in this world that we've created. I've watched this town, I've been a commercial real estate broker for over 20 years, and now, I'm a full-time photographer. I work for businesses downtown. And over the last year and a half to two years, I've watched these businesses slowly, slowly die because of their, there's a few bad apples out there of the homeless community that bring us down. And there's a bunch of good apples out there that want change, and they want to improve their life, but they can't. I want to help those people, and I want to help the people who are the bad apples. What do we have to do? I don't know. There needs to be a short-term plan and a long-term plan. If we make a motion to push this decision to another two weeks, we're not doing the right thing. We need to make a decision now. We need to help these people now. We need to help the downtown businesses now. I feel like if you guys can't make a decision, good luck at reelection.
Thanks, Zach. I'm going to say it one last time, and then it's going to come to a screeching halt, and we'll just move on through on this agenda, okay? If you can't control yourself, go outside and clap, okay? Michelle, where are you? There you are. Patrick Carney, Kelly McDonald.
Okay, my name is Michelle. I'm homeless. I'm 51 years old. To give a little background, I've got a mom, a dad, a sister, a brother, a wonderful nephew, and I grew up in a middle-class family in Silverton, Oregon. Sorry. Is that better? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that good?
Yeah.
Can I be heard? Okay. Okay, I'll start over. Is that, all right. So, I'm like this. I'm Michelle. I'm homeless. I'm 51 years old. To give a little background info, I've got a mom, a dad, a sister, a brother, and a wonderful nephew. I grew up in a middle-class family in Silverton, Oregon. As a homeless female, Safe Sleep where I stay currently, by United Way Coupling with Inside Out Church, is actually an excellent resource and a very safe place for women. I'm happy to be able to say that this endeavor is a complete success from my standpoint as a volunteer and a resident. It would be possible to use this as a template for other shelters. I feel much more dignified with the ability to say, "I do have a safe place to stay now. It's called Safe Sleep instead of I sleep when I'm tired, wherever I happen to be." But there were many times I had to sleep by myself wherever I was when I was tired, as scary as it sounds, with the risk of being assaulted or stolen from. But that is what I did. Okay, I have been very fortunate to not have been trespassed. But obviously, that's not always the case. Due to my experience, I don't believe that outlining sleep when and where, as needed, is the answer. I hate to imagine the first warning, the first day in jail for a ticket or having fines that I can't pay. Public places are just that. They are public places made for walking, sitting, enjoying, and sharing. They are not just for the strong, the weak, or the middle of the road, or the tall, or the short, or the rich, or the middle class, or the homeless. My mother and I had a conversation in our car. And she said, she's a rental home manager and a real estate agent in Silverton. She's telling me that her friends and acquaintances are afraid to walk downtown by Rite Aid. So, I'm, I'm a very friendly person. I talk to everybody. I mean, it doesn't matter what they look like, their attitude usually, but, thank you so much. But I talk to pretty much everybody I see. So, my rebuttal to that as a homeless person, and she knows I'm homeless, is that probably what's going to happen when they walk by Rite Aid, where the homeless people sometimes reside, is somebody may say, "Do you have a dollar? Do you have change? Do you have any pocket change?" Or, "Hi," or "Hello," or "How are you today?"
Michelle, thank you very much. Really appreciate your comments. Does anyone have any questions for Michelle?
Can I say one more thing?
What?
Somebody else made a comment about how we need more paid workers at shelters. I, I, that, that may or may not be the case. I don't have the answers for that. But, but I do know that we need more volunteers, more dependable volunteers, people that care about the world, humanity, and the general public.
Great. And you're, Michelle, you're at Safe Sleep, right? How's that going for you?
Excellent.
Great.
Excellent. They asked me to volunteer, and I love it.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Patrick Carney and Kelly McDonald?
Hi there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Patrick Carney, Ward Eight. I think I just want to echo Zach, Jim, and Erin's comments in what we're saying tonight. We have the downtown Nordstrom building that we have a dream of getting back to life. And that dream is stifled right now with the filth and the garbage and the chaos that comes from the current conditions. So, we advocate for a sit lie ordinance to clear the streets, to clear the sidewalks, to give people a clear path to get around, come down to the mall, come downtown, and enjoy. Thanks.
Thank you, Patrick. Kelly McDonald, followed by Ralph Jackson and Michelle McElhany?
Kelly McDonald, 1381 Chapman Hill Drive. I'm here to support the ordinance 95715 for the sit lie ordinance on sidewalks from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. I've seen this in other communities, be very effective in creating safer and more sanitary conditions in other areas otherwise where the things are piling up and becoming quite messy like they have been. And we've seen some desperate moves to maintain some level of sanitation by urban renewal through the periodic cleaning. I'm only to see it just pile back up. Understand it's a complex situation. There's not one answer for everybody that's on the street, the people that we've talked to, some of which are from other communities that have come here. Some seem to be desperate and searching and really need help. Some are just very upfront that this is their choice and leave us alone. So, I think it's a, it's a tough situation for you all to solve. It has to be taken in steps, and I think looking at this sit lie in the, in the areas where 24 hours a day encampments is just not acceptable. I had a conversation with a lady yesterday that was previously doing Northwest Surrogacy monthly meetings in downtown Salem. They're now moved to Kaiser. They witnessed a fight outside the restaurant or the cafe where they were having their meetings, and then another situation, they, you know, they're walking out to their cars and people are defecating in the street. They no longer felt safe, so they moved to Kaiser. I don't think that looks very good for Salem. I think that covers everything. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ralph Jackson, followed by Michelle McElhany, and then Tyler Jackson?
Mayor Bennett, Council and staff, I appreciate the offer to talk. And we have a building downtown Salem. I live in Ward Seven, but we have a building on Liberty and Court Street. And our family business has been in there for 75 years. And we bought the building in right around 2000 and did the toolbox programs through the city and with the loans, and have a full building of tenants, except we did lose the Starbucks Coffee Company. And they had worked on a long-term lease in 2015 with us, and they write their own leases, and then we approve them as a landlord. And they wanted to go out 25 years, and with an early termination in their lease, they exercised that this summer in August. And, you know, it's, they don't really say why, but we have reason to think that, you know, they just couldn't control their environment inside, and, and so they went on their way. So luckily, we have a new tenant in there we're very happy with. So, it, you know, we've, our family's been in business there a long time, and we want to keep our business and all the businesses going downtown and keep it a happy place. And I've observed a lot through the nearly 50 years in business myself, and, and, you know, I feel for these people, and, and it, we've helped a lot of people through the years, and my father helped people, and, and it's, it needs, I think it needs to go to the federal level and have every state in the United States care for the homeless in the same way so they don't, you know, so we don't have as many in maybe Oregon or Washington, California as, as we have. But, you know, I haven't studied it in depth like a lot of people have here. So, I, I feel that we want, have a beautiful city, and we want to keep it beautiful, and, and we need to really help the homeless.
Thank you very much. Michelle McElhany? Tyler Jackson?
Hi, my name's Michelle McElhany. I live in Kaiser. I own a business in the Salem Center Mall. It's Olive Boutique. I've owned it for six years now, and I just wanted to express to you what I've been hearing feedback from my customers that come in. They are upset about the situation that's going on. I have a lot of comments about people that they do not want to come down to the mall and shop anymore. They are constantly asking questions, "What is the city doing? How is it hurting you?" And I just wanted to relay that to you guys to please come up with a solution that is good for everybody. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tyler Jackson?
Thank you, Mayor and staff, and all the great people that came out for this. I want to just echo what Vanessa was saying about participation. All of us participating in this is the way that's going to change, and I love that all you came out for it. It's been really great to see that both sides are for a change, and that's what it's going to take to do it. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Tom Hoffer? Followed by TJ Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilor. My name is Tom Hoffer. I have the opportunity to serve as-
I have the opportunity to serve as the CEO of the Salem Area Chamber of Commerce. We represent over 1,000 largely small businesses in our community, many of which reside or do business in commerce downtown. I also am a resident of Ward 1. We return today to remind you of the Salem Chamber's board position and that of our membership in support of a sidewalk behavior ordinance. And this is an incredibly complex situation, and we do not really look at it as two different sides or two different factions faced off against each other, but rather a deep need within our community for resources and an equal shareholder in those who are property owners, employees, and customers coming to work each and every day downtown. And I'd also remind you, we worked extremely hard as a community to have mixed use fill our downtown. And now, we have many, many locations where storefronts on the base level, and your residents right now are living downtown as an active downtown that's a 24-hour city. We're in support of this ordinance for the hours that are described in the ordinance. From 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. would allow right-of-way for safe individuals to come in and out of properties, businesses, institutions, because it's not just business downtown. It's residents, it's arts, culture, different nonprofits and the like. That whole blending pot needs to have some sort of ability to have some enforcement and some teeth to it that allows people to feel safe. We are as compassionate as any organization, and as you will see across our board, across our many, many members and the over 40,000 employees that are represented by our organization, every one of those nonprofits has our business members on those boards, and they're very proud of that service. So rather than looking at this as a face-off between two different groups, we would encourage you to look at this as an opportunity for our community to come together and find equitable wins for all shareholders, be it a downtown business owner, a customer intending to come to that great downtown that we took years to build up, and the individuals, our friends and neighbors, who are struggling with homelessness on the streets. We believe very much in the leadership of Chief Jerry Moore and the recommendation of our city manager in favor of this ordinance, and would like to express that we'd be happy to see it go into place, and will continue our efforts to help with solutions towards this complex challenge.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
TJ Sullivan, followed by Pamela Watson and Angie. You're up after...
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Counselor. Sorry, I'm used to Janet sitting there. My name's TJ Sullivan. I reside in Ward 4. A lot of us were scratching our heads after the last time we visited this issue, with the council voting, the majority of the council voting, that people could sit and lie anywhere they wanted to, they just couldn't protect themselves from the elements, i.e. camping. That was a head-scratcher of a decision, and it really, it resulted in something that made life worse for every resident of Salem in the shortest amount of time. That's on your resume now. As a council, if you voted for that measure, that's on your resume. And let me tell you, you don't want that on your resume. You'd rather have South Block, or the Mike McLaren Minto Brown Pedestrian Foot Bridge, or, you know, the Broadway redevelopment. That's what you want on your resume. You don't want that you made life worse for residents, whether they're sheltered or unsheltered. It drove everybody underneath any public sidewalk that had a canopy, right? Which is what you would expect. The gentleman who had Nordstrom didn't relay the story, but his broker called me and said, "Hey, two days after you guys made that, after that went into effect, they had a site selectors coming to Nordstrom to look at it." They didn't even get out of the car. They got down there and turned around and drove away. That's, again, on you. You have a decision tonight to revisit that, to revisit your decision. And I will tell you, as hard as it is to say, "Hey, look, we really screwed up," it takes a lot of leadership to acknowledge that and say, "You know what? We're going to reverse this trend." I pledge to you, as a business owner and a resident of Salem, we are doing everything we can with the groups that Council Nordike's visited to help them coordinate their efforts in a better way to address the needs of our friends who are unsheltered. We have somebody who just joined the Main Street Board who's from Cambridge, Massachusetts, and she said, "What you guys haven't figured out here yet is there's a difference between homeless people and street people. The homeless people are the ones who are saying, 'I want help. I want to get out of it. Who's here to help me?'" Street people are the ones who are coming by and vandalizing property and making it hard on everybody else who is homeless and trying to make it out. This ordinance, when you change it from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., is going to address the street people. It's not going to impact the homeless people in our area. We're here to help. Please pass this ordinance as step one. Thank you.
Thank you, TJ. Pamela Watson.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to share. I'm Pamela Watson, and my ZIP code is 97317. And I, you know, oppose the sit-lie ordinance, but mainly because I feel that if the sit-lie ordinance is going to be approved, there has to be given another end. There has to be a partial or full repeal of the camping ban, at least temporarily, to specific areas, because it does not look like these people will have anywhere to go. Some of my concerns are that the ordinance says that they can go downtown, the unsheltered citizens can go downtown at 9:00 p.m. However, I'm downtown a lot as an advocate, and in every storefront, there's an SRC, no trespassing sign, every building, every side building, every storefront. If there's a trespassing sign, how in the world can they legally go down there and sleep at 9:00 p.m.? So I would like to find an answer tonight about where can they go where they won't get trespassed and moved out of the city. So that doesn't make any sense to me. It's good that, you know, you have that in the ordinance, but is it real? Can they really go down and sleep without being trespassed? My other concern is the donut hole. I know that it was said earlier that Arches may be looking at filling some of those hours. I personally talked to Jimmy Jones, and I hope he's here tonight and will come up and speak as well. There's no way that even if Arches opens up and extends their hours, a new GM, there's no way that that's going to even come close to fulfilling the amount of space needed to take care of the amount of people that will be standing out in the elements during those donut-hole hours. So I would highly recommend, unlike in December, what happened where there was supposed to be another duration center, I'm really imploring with the council, the easiest thing tonight would be to vote yes, the easiest thing right now, because we're all hurting. Every one of us in this room is hurting, and the people hurting the most are the unsheltered. Please think carefully. Do you have all your dots, eyes dotted? Do you have everything set up to make sure that when you vote yes and this thing kicks in, that there is some place that these people can go? Because right now, they have nowhere to go. They don't want to be on the sidewalk any more than any of us want them there. But we cannot mess this up again. These are human beings. We have people down there that are amputees, that I was helping yesterday. He pooped all over himself. I helped him clean himself up. We have real human beings down there that need help. We have to provide for them. We don't want them down there. They don't want to be there either, but please think this through and make sure that we have everything in order before you vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Angie. Then Ken Dahlke and Clifford Hartman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm here to speak on something different than the current topic, so I do apologize for interrupting. I'm Angie Uanlucci, President and CEO of Travel Salem, and I'm here to speak to Travel Salem's 2020-2025 strategic plan, which is on your agenda this evening for approval. And I wanted to update you on a couple of things. We are working with the city on ways to better leverage our partnership with the Oregon State Fair and Expo Center to ensure that facilities such as the Pavilion generate citywide opportunities that bring much-needed room nights and overall economic impact to the community. We are specifically focused on facility upgrades to improve infrastructure so we can recruit more sporting events to Salem. We're also interested in the mix of business throughout the year to guarantee the entire complex is being used to its full potential. We will be working closely with you on these types of priorities. In addition, we've begun conversations with partners on how we communicate and attract Latinx visitors to the market. This is a very important sector that is growing rapidly. In fact, we recently booked two additional Jehovah Witness conventions for Spanish-speaking delegates. This will bring in 9,000 more folks to our community beyond the 15,000 delegates they already bring to Salem for their regular conventions. Travel Salem is committed to rolling out the red carpet to our Latinx visitors and broadening our destination's appeal with this audience segment. We have hired a community relations specialist who will hit the ground running in April to begin the important work of aligning messaging with our region's team of economic development professionals to create more success in recruiting talent and investment to the region. We will also be focusing on education and outreach initiatives with our local residents to build brand ambassadors that care about our community and can share the beauty and bounty of our destination like no one else can. The goal of these initiatives is to build a cohesive and collaborative effort to deliver memorable Salem experiences to the hundreds of thousands of visitors that come here each year. Lastly, I encourage the city to continue to explore ways to expand our sports complex, particularly Wallace Marine Park, which was the first five-point star softball complex in the United States. It would be great to continue to lead as innovators in this sphere and create more products so we can compete for larger-scale tournaments that show off this amazing destination so well. I want to thank you for your tireless commitment to making Salem the best it can be and for your continued support of Travel Salem, your destination, marketing, and management organization. I do want to say that I feel a little awkward this evening, having this conversation with all of the important issues that are facing the city council and our community. I really respect the hard work you're doing, and thank you for allowing me to have a few minutes to talk about something that we also care about.
Thank you, Angie. Any questions? Okay, great. Thank you. Ken Dahlke, followed by Clifford Hartner, followed by Lanell Wilcox.
My name is Ken Dahlke. I reside in West Salem, and I'm a downtown building owner. And what I was here to talk about, I want to give my support to a lady named Faye DeMeyer. She's sitting over here. I heard her speak last week about obtaining the Hillcrest facility out there, or she calls it Hopecrest, and it just made a lot of sense to me, listening to her. She offered the city, or the estate, already over $3 million to purchase the property. Maybe a lot of you people are familiar with this. It's very well-suited for the homeless population, and it could be self-sustaining. She's got a lot of ideas of how people could be, find out how they could get into different careers and help each other out there with the facility. There's dormitories, there's cafeterias, and just the whole thing could really be a great place for the homeless or to get people that want to get off the streets. The state, she mentioned Spence, I'm not sure, it was over $30,000 a month right now just to maintain 55-degree temperature in those buildings out there. So a lot of money could be saved right there by the government. It just seems like a perfect place. I thank you, the police here in Salem. I read, as you guys might know, Spence is about 40%, maybe, of your time, right, police chief, with the homeless population. Maybe that would be relieved a little bit, too, also. Just seems like a very positive thing, and I'm hoping that Faye would be talking tonight about it a little bit more, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ken. Clifford Hartner, followed by Lanell Wilcox, followed by Scott Russell.
My name is Clifford Hartner. I have a house in the 4th Ward, and I live in Jan Ray. Only government is able to authorize or allow people to exist without a government sanction. Very bad things happened in our history of our civilization. In order to exist, you have to be able to have your basic needs met. Oregon, even mentally ill, says that you are able to be on your own until you reach a point where you're a danger to yourself or others are not able to meet your basic needs. You've said that people aren't able to sleep underneath a tent, okay? Now you're saying they don't have the ability to sit down or lie down. That's a basic need. If you are not able to give them a place to go, a place to camp, a place to stay, a place to be during the day, they don't have the ability to exist. This isn't a problem in Salem. This goes north into British Columbia. This goes south, down through California and probably more farther south. Something has happened over the last three years, and it is a disaster. Why are we not treating it like a disaster? Why do we not have an incident command system in place to make timely decisions and not let this happen every two weeks, every month? Why is it that we don't allow people to be in a park at least to be able to sleep? All the people don't have mental illness, but many of them do. They have a co-occurring mental health and substance abuse disorder, which is a chronic illness. It's not able to get cured. At best, what we're able to do is allow the relapses to be shorter and be longer between the relapses. If we force and herd people out of Salem into our neighboring communities, they're going to retaliate in kind and send their mentally ill people here, and we're going to have people who are, instead of being able to be engaged, they're going to be in strange communities. I think what we need to do is meet people where they're at, do motivational interviewing, and try to understand why is it that they would rather be on the streets than not be forced into taking medication and losing their free will. I think it's just a travesty that you would implement a no-sit-lie regulation without giving them a place to sleep at night. I thank you.
Thank you, Lanell Wilcox.
Hi, my name is Lanell, and I'm in Ward 4, Kara's Ward. A lot of things are the same as when we had this topic come up in November, including we have 385 letters opposing sit-lie. The summary is in your packet. I didn't burden you and the clerk's office with each copy, but it is available from the last time. A lot of advocates are going to talk about some of the same facts and some of the same myths that are out there, so I was trying to focus on things that are different. Although I want to back up, the letters include a letter from Oregon Law Center and Disability Rights Oregon, who are very concerned about what's happening in Salem and are watching this. But I tried to focus on what might be different, what might be new even to me. So I spent a couple of weeks talking to people downtown. I think I've spoken with about half of the unsheltered citizens living downtown. I did that with no fear along the way. Sometimes fear reflects a need for education, not an indication of danger. The things I've learned, no one is, almost no one is service-resistant. Almost every single person is connected to services and is looking for more resources. Almost every person I spoke with would go to our warming shelter if it was low barrier, open, close by, and if pets, partners, and property were allowed. People are hesitant to go to a warming shelter that might be far away and have a low capacity because then they're stranded with stuff and nowhere to go. Our mayor and city manager are saying that there's like 50 beds people just aren't using. I'm imagining that must be UGM mats for their emergency shelter. So I'm asking people why they're not using those. Most people don't know they exist. You can't use a resource if you don't know it's there. UGM shared with me that they have those mats, but there's an 8pm curfew, so with most warming shelters, you can come in at any time. Something surprised me. Many people are looking for work. Some people are working. Some people are pursuing sobriety and attending meetings. There's lots of revving engines and insults shared as I'm talking to people. Many people are keeping their sites clean and trying to clean up after others. Multiple unsheltered citizens are experiencing officers shining lights in their eyes as they sleep, taking structures down, laughing at them, calling them idiots as they sleep. Sit-lie can't work unless we come from compassion. Some officers' professionalism and compassion has become questionable to me as a result of these conversations. It seems like, your packet includes a chart summarizing some of what I've learned, but you guys have made multiple investments that are coming true very soon, and it seems like there's an opportunity now to actually do this relationally, just like your...
Thank you, Lanell.
...program does.
Lanell, thank you very much. Scott Russell. And Jill Foster. Jill Foster, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Lanell, thank you for sharing with us the outreach document that we have in our packet. I wanted to follow up on one of the comments that you were making, and I'm also reading it in the packet itself. You mentioned that there are instances where people are being urinated on?
I had heard that before, but talking to people downtown, many of our unsheltered citizens are treated like invisible or vermin, but multiple men told me they have woken up being peed on, and you'd rather be invisible than treated that way. I asked one guy, you know, "How often does this happen?" He teared up, he couldn't answer the question. He said, "If I talk to you about that, I'm just going to cry." We are at more risk of unsheltered citizens being hurt by sheltered citizens than the reverse. And even police statistics share that person-to-person crimes against a stranger are very low. We need more education.
Thank you, Lanell. Scott Russell, then Jill Foster, then Lori Walker.
Good evening, Scott Russell, 97305. I thank you, I appreciate what you've done for the homeless through HRAP and various funding, and I acknowledge that. However, last Christmas, the city of Salem gifted its homeless citizens with a camping and property ban ordinance. Now, just days after Valentine's Day, the city continues to love by resurrecting the sit-lie ordinance from the dead in time for Easter. Unintended consequences: Last spring, our unsheltered neighbors were evicted from Wallace Marine, Cascade, Minna Brown, Portland Road, and Lancaster, and various other encampments. The unintended result that followed was 30-plus tents, 30-plus tents on Arches property and across the street from Arches. Then in December, the city passed the camping and property ban to deal with that, and the unintended result is what we have now with 50 or so of our homeless community living downtown near Rite Aid and the Salem Center. So now, the city wants to resurrect the much-killed-off earlier sit-lie ordinance to deal with this, which the city has essentially created. And I doubt that any of us are prepared for the unforeseen consequences that would arise if this unconstitutional sit-lie ordinance gets passed. I propose that the city lifts or removes the camping ban throughout the entire city except for the downtown area between 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m., which is the same as saying no downtown camping between 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. This action will not cost the city any money and deals with the unsheltered citizens existing downtown right now that the proposed sit-and-lie ordinance attempts to eradicate. Thank you.
Thank you. Jill Foster.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Jill Foster and I'm an attorney at Churchill Leonard. I've just recently, today in fact, been retained by my client ACV CFT Salem, which owns the building located at 450 Commercial Street and 435 Liberty Street. This is the building that has two tenants, Rite Aid and TJ Maxx. One of their tenants has declined to renew their lease and will be moving from the location, and they're having a tremendously difficult time luring new potential tenants to the area, based on the epicenter of the crisis that's located on the Liberty side of the building. One of the Salem requirements is that an awning be on the street front to have a welcoming pedestrian and inviting environment for downtown shoppers. This requirement requires that the awning remain on Liberty Street, which is made it the location that's preferable, as there are also no entrances from the Rite Aid corner all the way down to Marion Street, and there's no entrances to TJ Maxx on that side as well. However, there are fire doors that are inaccessible for the tenant in the TJ Maxx building because of the way that the little fire door area in Alcove has become a restroom for the unsheltered people that are staying there. My client advocates that the council pass the sit-lie ban ordinance and helps them have an enforcement opportunity to protect their business and the vibrancy of downtown Salem. If the other tenant either doesn't stay, extend its lease, or decides to go dark, which is a possibility, then the downtown Salem area is deprived of a pharmacy for local residents, a large shopping area that provides clothing and everything that is needed to that community. So we would ask that the ordinance be supported, and if the ordinance is not supported, then we would request that the council provide some opportunities for businesses to have waivers or exemptions of requirements that are inadvertently causing a nuisance situation that the businesses then would be responsible for. Thank you, and we'd ask that you support the ordinance.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Lori Walker, followed by Kathleen Thorpe, followed by Adrian Lockhart.
Lori Walker will be back shortly. She has the knees, but she'll be back.
Kathleen Thorpe.
Ah, there you are.
Good evening. I have lymphitis, so you get to watch video. He's trying to get the sound on.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. Can we roll back to me in just a minute?
Yeah, let me call someone else up while you guys get, is that okay? Yeah.
Thank you.
Adrian Lockhart.
Can you get my file, my website up? Thank you. All right, so what you're seeing here is a navigation center for the homeless that they are building up in Portland. They're putting it up in eight weeks. That's all it takes to put this up. You have over 100 beds, ways to get people connected to the services that they need. And guess what? The ACLU is just waiting for another case to sue Portland over because the Oregon Supreme Court said that most likely their sit-lie ordinance is unconstitutional. You know why? You have to provide housing to people. You can't just tell them, "Sorry, you have nowhere to go. We don't want you here, we're just going to lock you up." You can't do that. It's unconstitutional. And for the North Shore Place, I'm sorry, but your needs for cleanliness and safety do not matter more than the homeless people that are getting accosted every single day on the sidewalks. How about their safety? You want to talk about safety? Have you been to Portland? This is a safe town. All I hear is a bunch of white privilege. Your rich white privilege. If you have a home, you have privilege. If you don't, guess what? You're treated like vermin. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so scared to go downtown because of the homeless people. They're not cockroaches. Get over yourselves. I was homeless, and the programs don't work for me because I was staying in a hotel. I was considered housed. My wife had a job. We couldn't get any help. Arches has thankfully paid for two months of our rent, but we can't get any more help if we need it. I live paycheck to paycheck. And for the people that say, "Some people just don't want help," no, they are people like me who are autistic, who get job after job and lose it time after time after time and can't get any more help. Then you say, "Screw it. Nobody wants to help me," and you turn your back on the world. The world has already turned your back on us. So, excuse me if I am sick and tired of you guys bringing this crap up. The sit-in-life ordinance just creates more stress for the homeless. They have no one to talk to to say, "I don't feel safe." And the shelters, especially UGM, I hear about that. That's for pedos, not for anyone else. That's why people don't use it. Until you actually spend a night on the street, shut up about your safety. You have a house to go into. You're not getting peed on. You think people want to take a crap on the street? No, it's humiliating. They have nowhere to go because every single business downtown says, "Restrooms for customers only." They don't care about their other neighbors, the ones that are sleeping in front of their place. You could actually work up a situation with the homeless people that are sleeping in front of it and say, "Hey, I'll provide you something in exchange for you watching this area."
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Adrian. Vicki Simpson and Dee Dee LaBaron.
I'm Vicki Simpson. I've lived in Salem since 1971. I am a retired nurse of 40 years, all but three of that years working in Salem with women, children, and families, volunteering with Marion County Health Department. I was on the Health Department Advisory Board for 19 years. My husband was a firefighter in this city for 30 years. The only reason I say that is to let you know that we are invested in this community. We have worked with a myriad of folks in this community, from the top economic to the very lowest economic. And what is happening now with our unsheltered folks is absolutely unbelievable to me, that any community could treat people in the manner that these folks are treated. I am a volunteer, my husband is a volunteer, we've been volunteering with the homeless community, with the shelters, for almost four years. This year is the worst it's ever been. There are no shelter beds open compared to what the last two or three years have been. We can't get volunteers. People are burned out, working night after night after night. There are very few shelters opened this last year. It was 26 degrees a few months ago, and we couldn't get enough volunteers to open First Presbyterian Church downtown, the largest and the most well-provided-for shelter. These folks, only 900 were counted in the census that was recently done, there are hundreds and hundreds of other folks that are out there that were not reached by the count. We know that. Why are people on the street? Because they have no place else to go. You have provided for very few. The services are not coordinated. You say you don't want people peeing and defecating on the sidewalk. People don't, they have to go somewhere. Do we have porta-potties? Do we have bathrooms? One of the homeless people, last week when I was out delivering food and clothing, I always ask, "Would you please do one thing for me? Pick up around your area?" He said, "We don't have any trash. There's one trash receptacle for the whole entire block." I started bringing big trash bags. They want to be treated like humans. I have never felt threatened. I go out at night, I go out three or four times a week. I have only been treated with kindness and graciousness and acceptance because that's the way I treat these people. They are human beings, they are your neighbors, they are people who have lost jobs, they are people who have mental
Thank you very much.
asthma.
Thank you.
They need multiple
Dee Dee LaBaron. Followed by Connie Griffiths.
Hi, my name is Dee Dee LaBaron. I'm the satellite manager for the Dress for Success Oregon store here in Salem. Dress for Success Oregon provides professional attire in an empowering environment to women who are ready to go to work. Once employed, they can return for more clothing and additional mentorship services. Our workforce development program include providing interview, work clothing, job search training, job retention workshops, and ongoing support and mentorship. I would like to add our voice. I sent a letter, it is in your packet, but I'm going to read that out loud. "We would like to add our voice to the issue of the sidewalk camping in downtown Salem. I am no stranger to homelessness. I understand that this is a complex issue. I have worked with the economically challenged for many years, and as a single mother have struggled with poverty myself and homelessness. Housing has always been a thin line that can make or break those who are barely holding on. In recent years, we have seen more and more people we work with end up on friends' couches and cars and shelters and finally on the streets. The Salem downtown camping issue started exactly when the homeless camps at Arches were swept. I noticed that day that there were people just wandering, not knowing what to do next. Within a day or so, there was a visual presence of people finding shelter under the eaves of a mall on Center Street, which is where we are located. I assumed at that time there was a plan to help people find safe, dry, warm shelter. As the days go on, I realized that these people have nowhere else to go. There was no Plan B, there's no judgment. I understand some of the issues that go along with homelessness, including addiction, mental and emotional issues, stress-related issues, cleanliness and safety. Those same issues have moved from Arches to the Salem Center Mall. How this impacts us? We are noticing an increase of agitation, drug use, garbage, sidewalks as bathrooms. We have begun to worry about the safety for our own customers who often are dealing with trauma themselves. Some of the reported experiences, in fact, my own, added on to what I have seen myself. Our back door, we are no longer able to take donations at that area because it is now a bathroom. There have been fights, there has been, the other morning I was in the mall at 7:30 a.m. and a group of, there was probably eight men, were fighting with a big dog. I was actually physically scared that day. And I can tell you that 90% of the people that I walk past in the mornings or in the evenings, I am not afraid of, but there are some issues down there that are very scary. The mall personnel have handled this as best as they can with patience and care. I've watched them work patiently, de-escalating fights and domestic violence, calming people who are worried loudly about being poisoned, calmly attending to youth groups
Dee Dee, thank you, thank you very much. Connie Griffiths.
I want to thank you for your patience. You know, you should know who I am, you do. I introduced myself earlier. I'm Connie Griffiths. I'm in West Salem. I'm in Pioneer Village and I have 160 units. I'm your neighborhood watch. Yeah, those people that you're all talking about, those homeless, they're doing the same thing they were doing down in Wallace. They're doing the same thing they were doing, 150 of them, in the backwoods. You know what? I am so active in the human rights in this issue. I have been veteran for seven years. I've been two years in a self-help hospital. I have been tortured out of my mind. I did it for you, God and country. I had a stroke at command. But now, I'm the lady in the white robe. I answer the door and it's New Year's. Uh-huh. Ten of them, homeless, take over my home. They want to rob me. They want to attack me. They want to boot me. They put me out in the streets walking because I wasn't safe in my home. Then I'm out there walking. I tried to report it to somebody and then I got the police thinking, "I'm homeless and I'm unsafe." You have, now, everybody in those parks, there's skate park, there's drugs. Yeah, nobody's safe nowhere, we're in it together. They're raging, they're out of control. Risk, dangerous business, now 30% loss. You continue to let this lawlessness go on. Businesses will be out of business and then homeless and lawlessness and then can be contended. It's wrong. It's wrong for everybody. We're in it together. Please, quit making excuses for the homeless when we all have to maintain some lawlessness and some dignity. If there's excuses and If there's excuses and disability, how do I cripple properly in front of you? They are everywhere. You're not safe. Just tell them no. And see them rage. Let them attack you. Let them red blue. Let them beat you. They're taking your children, and they're feeding them drugs. I'm standing there, I'm watching. I have now in the neighborhood of 100 police reports, firemen reports. I'm here on the ground with the police. These police are doing their job correctly, and so are you. But making excuses for them is not. They've been able, for seven years I've been out there walking with them. Northwest Human Services is still placing them. That's my project. Will they show up? No. Have I been telling them all these resources? Seven years. Do they listen? No. They could come in for bad children. They have more help.
Thank you, Connie, thank you. Brian Clem.
I didn't like it, and I don't want to kiss it more.
Thank you. First of all, Brian Clem, 396 Hoyt Street, Southeast. And I want to thank you all, first of all, for serving on the City Council. It is a thankless job. As some of you know, I'm the state representative for this area, including the downtown. I get paid at least $1,500 a month. You get nothing. And what I love about this is, I came home from the Capitol. I was watching this on TV, and I'm like, "I'm going to go testify." And that's what democracy is all about. So, thank you for doing it. I have my glasses on. You probably never see me in glasses, but I was home. I was trying to hang out with my daughter. What I want to say to you is, I'm working with the city to try and get funding for a navigation center and for a low barrier shelter. We want $8 million. We have some problems today with Quorum, but I'm confident we will get money. But I can tell you this, having a solution on Sit Lie is part of the solution too. The state is willing to invest money, but we have to have something done here too. There's a proposal coming, I hope later. I spoke with, my counselor's not here, but I spoke with Councilor Hoy yesterday, and I'm very supportive of this proposal. And we need to do something. I'll do my part to find the human service dollars, to find help, but, you know, I have, my daughter got an apple thrown at her yesterday while trying to get some shoes in the downtown. And it's not okay. She's 12 years old. So, I will do whatever I can to help find the money, to help the path. I'll figure out a night and go sleep down there too, to figure out what it's like. But the bottom line is, this can't go on. I represent people in this town too. They come to me now about this too. They're afraid sometimes in their neighborhoods, "Where are you going to put the next one?" I mean, this is not an easy solution. But the bottom line is, there aren't evil enemies in anybody here. You just got to talk and figure it out. And I like this proposal I've heard about coming later, and I thank you for letting me come and testify.
Thank you, Representative Clem. Okay, Holly Oaks Miller. Followed by, are you ready with your PowerPoint now? Do you feel ready? Okay, we'll do it as soon as Holly's done. We'll take a run at it and see what happens.
Hello, my name is Holly Oaks Miller. My partner Gary and I have lived and worked five for over 15 years, and we oppose all versions of the Sit Lie ordinance. Once again, the city has chosen to bring back this immoral and ineffective ordinance as a method to deal with issues that surround people forced by circumstance to reside in public spaces. This is a problem of political will and of moral clarity, a problem that requires the city to value the lives of our most vulnerable neighbors above the profits of developers and business owners and above the demands of materially privileged downtown residents. It is unacceptable to working-class people like us that the city can find $4 to $5 million a year to fund policing unsheltered folks, but can only find a few hundred thousands of dollars to provide emergency shelter to those same people. The adoption of this new ordinance would mean that even more taxpayers' money would be spent to police the problem rather than implementing housing-first solutions that are proven to work. We would like to remind the city that currently taxpayer money is mainly funded by working-class people who expect their leaders to not waste taxpayer dollars. We would also like to remind the city that housing is a basic human right. City leaders must find the moral clarity to begin approaching this as a housing justice issue in order to make sure all community members have shelter and to do so in a way that prioritizes the needs of individual people. Housing justice in Salem should include no-barrier shelters, youth shelters, community housing, year-round urban camping, rent control, along with the creation of community-wide common spaces with 24-hour restrooms, showers, laundry, storage meeting rooms, and cooking facilities. Many of these were suggested by the Downtown Homeless Task Force, but not yet implemented. We urge the city to listen to the demands for housing justice from homeless advocates, people experiencing houselessness, and working-class people who make up the majority of Salem residents. What do we want? Housing justice. When do we want it? Now.
Thank you. And Kathleen, do you want to take another run at it?
Take another run at it, thank you.
You bet.
So, there's no, there's music with it. So, nobody's going to read anything out.
Okay.
He's genius, by the way. Just read along and imagine some fabulous sounds.
There we go.
He's got it.
Thank you. Okay, Dan Roslin, Paul Tolman, Rachel Kierman.
Hi, I'm Dan Roslin from Ward Two. I can't say what's already been said any better, but I want to try a little exercise, just to do something different. I think we all agree that the folks down on the Rite Aid sidewalk are not there because they want to be. A series of decisions made by the city have put them there. So, what I'd like the city to do is to try to, for just two minutes, put yourselves in the shoes of a homeless person. This is an exercise in empathy. For whatever reason, life circumstances deprived you of your house or your apartment. You still needed shelter, and you would like to preserve your dignity, which includes privacy. You didn't want to be conspicuous. You're a social person, and so you joined people with like circumstances in various tent camps around the outskirts of the city. If you were lucky, you got to be in that well-organized, self-policing tent camp described to you two weeks ago at this very meeting by Rebecca Beeman. Then the police came and said you had to leave. The camp you were in was dismantled. It seemed logical to you and your neighbors to go to a place that actually served houseless people, Arches Project. The camp at Arches took the city by surprise. And no surprise before long, it was an eyesore and a health hazard. There were no porta-potties, no dumpsters. Fortunately, wiser heads prevailed, and those were brought in. But this wasn't enough to please the power brokers of Salem. And one week before Christmas, you were uprooted again. This time, this time, you couldn't use your tent. The awning at Arches, the awning at Rite Aid was pretty tempting. It was not too far away. It was close to meals, and it was a way to stay dry because you couldn't use your tent. But once a week, you had to move so that the sidewalk could be cleaned because, once again, there were no porta-potties, no convenient trash receptacles for you to throw your things away. So, it became another health hazard. February 24th, today, the City Council passes Sit Lie. Now, what are you going to do? The emergency shelters are full for you and your dog, you and your partner, you and your emotional, mental illness, you and your addictions. There's no place for you.
Thank you very much. Paul Tolman, Rachel Kierman?
Check one, check one. Hello, everyone. My name's Paul Tolman. I live in Ward One, 104 High Street, Second. I'm in the cove. Okay. I want to say thank you, guys, for at least bringing this issue up once again. You know, it's a hard, hard job to do. I am all for the Sit in Lie thing if you remove every table and chair off the public sidewalks for every bistro and restaurant out there that has an open-door bar sitting on the street. I'm all for that. You remove that alcohol, you remove those tables, you remove those chairs, you stop the permits, and I'll say, "Let's do it." Okay? If you don't, well, then I'm totally against it, and I will fight this issue. If I have to hire a lawyer and get into some old money somewhere buried, I'll fight this issue. You got to treat us all with respect, fairness, no difference than anybody else here. I got five fingers, two legs. It's not very hard. I take care of my spot. I got permission to be there. I even thank the person that I am staying in their doorway. I watch over their spot, and I watch over myself, and I watch over my neighbor, my next doorway neighbor. You know, she's a mentally ill young woman, and I've had to stand up four times. I'm a little bitty guy. I don't care. There's nobody any bigger here. But I've had to stand up four times for people I've never seen before encroaching on that woman's face. And I'm grateful, grateful that she allowed me to stay on that sidewalk next to her and find that little alcove so I can hear things going on. And yes, we hear it all night long. It's out there. People come by, "Here, Ricko." Or they'll honk their horns or just hit their, you know, their gas. And it's just ridiculous. I just want a safe place for me and Kate, you know? She's a wonderful woman. I've invited her here like I've invited a lot of these faces. For the past three weeks, I've been working on, "You want to see the homeless face? Well, just look in the mirror because we're no different than you." You know? What's going to happen, Mayor? If we have that great earthquake and we got 50,000 people now homeless, and you can't deal with 500 downtown? Because there are 8,000 homeless people in this community. Minimum, minimum of 8,000. You go down every alley, street, back, park, there is at least 8,000 people homeless in this town. And that's putting it really, really mild. I'm guessing more like 18,000. That's 10%. Nationwide, 30%. This country is falling apart. And I don't know who's to blame. Maybe it's the cartel, or maybe it's me, or maybe it's the banking or the car industry. It's our community. Let's solve this issue, and let's solve it today. Not tomorrow. Don't keep putting this little Band-Aid out there that says, "I'm going to drag it out. I'm going to drag it out." Get me a porta-potty tomorrow.
Thank you. Rachel Kierman? I may be saying it wrong. Jason Greenwood? There you are. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rachel Kierman. I'm actually new to Oregon from one of the poorest states in the country. And when I moved to Oregon, I had assumed that you would not have the homeless issues that I was accustomed to facing every day. And obviously, since I'm new to the area, I have been taken aback by what I see on the streets. Now, I think we're all in agreement at this point that the Sit Lie ordinance is immoral and has no validity in a civilized society. But there is more going on that I don't think the City Council is aware. I speak to people every day who tell me they are less than a paycheck away from homelessness. When you have over half the population saying they can't afford a $400 emergency, that brings it home. So, it wouldn't take much, a bump in the stock market, another recession, and the homeless issue here is going to take off. What I want to see, in addition to saying that, yes, we have a problem, is what solutions can be provided? In Salt Lake, they did the miniature homes, so it get people back on the street, parts of the southwest, parts of the south, including Austin. As someone mentioned, they have tent cities that are still more of a shelter and more of a community than what I am finding when I talk to people on the streets of downtown every day. So, you know, we need to address the fears and the concerns of people in this city. I appreciate that. I'm open to ideas, but we need to look at what has worked in other cities and see how to apply it here. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Greenwood?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. Hi, most of you know me. Thanks for, City Council, listening to all of us and listening to everyone here. My name is Jason Greenwood, and I live and have a business in Ward Three. I'm here to talk about several different things, but one of them is definitely the housing. I own Divine Distillers, Salem's only distillery. I have five people who work for me, three of them who are in recovery, two of them who are homeless. Two of them are the same. And they would be homeless if they weren't working for us. Our business has been unable to move into our own building that we bought last year because of permit issues for over six months. I've spoken to several businesses that have had similar issues with building permits. I've spoken, I've gotten, it's just very hard to get anything done in the city of Salem. Not blaming anyone. All of this cascades down to several issues, including having money and businesses that are willing to help our city. If I, who have, who had a lot of resources, have had all this trouble getting permits for the city of Salem, what hope does anyone who doesn't have these resources have to do any kind of building, do any kind of change in the city? It's no surprise to anyone here that there's a housing crisis in Salem. There's a housing crisis all over the U.S. That's why this room is full. That's why we have the cameras here. That's why we have everyone here, because there's a housing crisis. Virtually everyone wants to help, not harm people. But businesses don't want unhoused people next to them. People don't want unhoused people near their homes. At the same time, affordable housing is non-existent. It's virtually not here. One of the people who worked for me, when he started working for me, he had a mobile home. It was an early '80s mobile home. We looked everywhere for a place for him to be parking that mobile home. There just don't exist. There's no place for him to go. You know, prices of housing in Salem keep increasing, and affordable housing is more elusive than ever. Our citizens need help. Most of people don't want to live without a roof over their heads. My wife and I are constantly looking for ways to help people. We've given to Marion Pope Food Share. We've given to Habitat for Humanity. We've helped Habitat for Humanity. Habitat for Humanity. And we're starting to build a business that has a second chance training for people. I'd like to encourage the city of Salem and everyone involved to find ways of creating long-term solutions and streamline. There's no, there's vacant city, there's vacant lots and vacant buildings in the city of Salem. I don't know why. I don't know why we don't have a vacancy tax. I don't know why we don't tax people who refuse to do anything about this. I don't know why we don't work harder to make it easier for businesses to set up so that they can have their own space, so that they can build and help other people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lonnie Miller? Anthony? Yeah, it could be Lori Miller. If you look at that N and say that's an R, I'm with you.
Good evening. One thing I do want to say as I'm sitting here is that, you know, businesses hire people, pay people so they can buy housing. Businesses pay taxes so we can have money for the homeless. And with that, I'll stay on script beyond that. My name is Lori Miller and I'm on the onsite property manager for the Equitable Center. It's located at the corner of High and Center Streets in downtown. I have seven floors of office tenants. They all have employees that need to be able to safely walk to work from the various city parking garages. In the last few months, since the people moved in on Center and Liberty Streets, I am sad to hear stories of employees who are afraid after an encounter with one of these people. Maneuvering through human waste and bodies just to get to work from the parking garage is simply unacceptable. The retail tenants tell me that the first thing a customer will comment on is the hideous human mess down the street. This is hurting their bottom line and after investing in downtown, some may very well not be able to stay in business. My tenants, who are on the north side of the building, look out and see the garbage, the bodies, and the overall chaos across the street. This used to be a beautiful view from the building. These businesses pay taxes, follow the laws, enrich downtown, and have committed to being part of the downtown renewal. And in return, city government has turned a blind eye. My day porter should not have to clean up human waste, needles, and garbage every morning left by these people. Lastly, the environment, environmental and health and safety impact alone should be enough for you to change your policies.
Thank you, Lori. Anthony Stevens, followed by Dana Vucktavine, followed by Brandon Lama. Okay. Dana Vucktavine? Followed by Brandon Lama. Come on down, Brandon, if you're here, so I can see you. Thank you. Go ahead, Dana.
Very good. Dana Vucktavine, 401 Center Street, Ward 1, and I'm manager, Salem Center Shopping Center, Mayor Bennett. Councilors, thank you for the opportunity to come here once again to address you on this issue of unhoused citizens present in the retail and commercial core of downtown Salem. Businesses, especially in the commercial core, are under siege by the continued presence of unhoused citizens using the public right-of-way as their temporary residence as well as for sanitation facilities. We are at risk of continued erosion of our customer base as well as the potential loss of employment in the downtown core as this crisis on our sidewalks continue. Millions of dollars of private investment, hundreds of jobs, and the strength of the tax base are under attack and remain highly at risk the longer you delay in enacting appropriate legislation to relocate the unhoused from our city streets. I encourage the council to pursue the long-term recommendations of the Homeless Solutions Task Force, including the continuation of funding of programs such as successful H-Rap program, provision of a navigation center, a sobering center, long-term increased opportunities for low-barrier shelter beds, as well as provision of storage for personal belongings and increased public sanitation facilities. All of these items require significant funding and a long time to develop. However, in the immediate timeframe, we need the council to act now to enact the proposed sit lie ordinance, either in conjunction with or without identifying an acceptable location to permit short-term camping to afford the unhoused individuals with a small amount of dignity and adequate shelter for, from the elements. Shelter that is at least moderately better than that afforded by the canopies and awnings of businesses in the commercial core. Failure to act now will continue to erode the economic vitality of downtown Salem as both customers and business operators seek alternative locations to operate and shop. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Brandon Lama, followed by Doug Doty?
Good evening. Sorry, I haven't done anything like this before. I typically watch these from home on social media. You guys do a good job of getting your content out. And I found myself very frustrated over the last few meetings and I was, I couldn't sleep and so I just made it a point that I had to come out. And I talked to the mayor briefly about a couple of my concerns. I will say, there's been some great testimony from both sides. I definitely don't think this should be a us versus them, them versus us mentality. We're all in this together. And, and I feel like the long-term solutions you guys are starting to get to, and I feel like that's, that's something I'm really supportive of and anxious to see as those start to come. And obviously, the short term is why we're here. Just to give a little backstory, I live in Ward 8, work down in Ward 1. My wife is also a business owner of 14 years in Ward 1. And she, we've gone through our ups and downs of, when I first got here downtown, we were like, man, they need to do something with downtown, it's awful, like, you know, they need to bring some life down here. And over the last, you know, five years or so, we've seen just a dramatic change. It's, it's, it's pretty amazing what's been able to take place downtown. There's a lot of life, a lot of really strong business owners, really good businesses going on. So that's why it's so hard for me to see what we're allowing to happen. And I really do feel like you guys are doing a disservice to not only the business owners, the employees, and the consumers of downtown who live in every single ward that's represented. But you're doing a disservice to the people, you know, that are unsheltered and that are here as well. Um, you know, and I don't know if there's some political gain from having them be on the downtown streets so everyone drives by them every day or what it is, but, you know, they have dignity as well and I know they don't want to be forced into this position. I drive by the Marion Park every day. I've never seen a kid there playing. I've never seen parents take their families there. The basketball court's empty, there's no one shooting hoops. And I think, why, why can't, you know, we put a structure there, you know, a tent, you know, a fence off the skate park and at least until you guys come to your long-term solutions, allow people to have tents there? Because it's becoming a safety issue downtown. And I was glad to hear that it's a safety issue on both sides, right? My wife is six months pregnant, we have two kids at home. Downtown employees are not allowed to park downtown. They get a hundred dollar ticket. So they are forced to go to the parkades. She has to go to the parkade pregnant at night on certain nights. And on multiple occasions, there's been a man that's pleasuring himself in the elevator. What is she, you know, how is she supposed to respond to that? So I just really hope that you guys can take the steps to fix this. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Doty? Boy, I'm not gonna get this one right. Gams, G-A-M-B-S, last name? I just can't tell. Treba? Treba? Ah, good. There, okay, now I see it. Angela Phelan something. Go ahead, Doug.
My name is Doug Doty. I live at 447 State Street, which is the two buildings, in the two buildings that we, my wife, Gail Calderazzo, and I restored. And I got a little story, I wanted, I'm gonna start my three minutes here with a little story. Gail and I married eight years ago and who knows Gail Calderazzo Doty? I think all of you or most of you who are not new to town. Well, this has been an interesting ride because about six months after we were married, she said, "Have you ever wanted to live in the same building that you work? I've always wanted to do that." I unwittingly said, "Me too." A very short sentences with many ramifications. Within six weeks, I had talked to Warren Bednarz and he told me about a building downtown or two buildings downtown that were available here in his mother's estate. We spent the next eight months doing due diligence and acquiring those two buildings down there, which now house Ritter's Archive and so forth. And, and also the major tenant in there is Doty Wilson CPAs, Doty, my namesake. And Gail and I live upstairs on the corner. When you see the, you see, drive by and see Fox News on, that's us. Anyway, so, people think we're rich, they think we're evil business owners and developers. I heard that term tonight. Do they have any, do you have any idea of the sacrifice and the risk that it takes to develop a property in the downtown of Salem? We spent two and a half years on this. We borrowed, borrowed every dime we could get our hands on, put ourselves at financial risk beyond anything I dreamed we'd ever do. And when we finished that property, every square inch, 43,000 square feet, we were into that property a million and a half more than the fair market value of those properties. So I, I want to speak to you as a person who works downtown and who has invested downtown and who lives downtown. Now, this issue needs to be resolved. I too attended the meeting with Fede and De Meyer, proposed many things in regard to a property that perhaps could house many homeless people. I don't know what the real solution is here totally, but please, this isn't good to have people out in the elements in plain view, no privacy. We must solve this problem for everyone's dignity. The solution has got to be mutually acceptable and helpful to all parties. I don't understand why people are coming into our community that are, excuse me.
Thanks, Doug. Treba?
Good evening and thank you so much for being here. You have a hard job. I wanted to share with you that I've been in a business here in Salem. June will be 10 years. In those 10 years, it's been wonderful. We've had a lot of growth, we've seen a lot of things come to fruition. This last year, though, has been a very difficult year for me. I have had things that have happened to my business in this year that had not happened in the eight previous. I have had break-ins, I have had all of our propane stolen, which was over 50 tanks, and it's done with bolt cutters. So this isn't something that is just a flyby and it may be, what is the impact? What is different? It is the decisions that we've made with our city that has caused some of my things that are going on. So whether it's the homeless issue, is it the street issues, is it the decisions that we're making as a community? What do we have to do better? And I don't think it's a one-size-shoe fits all. I think we have several things that we need to do. We don't have, what is affordable housing when you have no money? That's not, we've got to find different ways that everybody can exist and to create this Salem that we had the intention of doing and that we've started, but we failed and we've stopped and we've got to pick it back up. We have community, we have people that are all willing to help, we have homeless that are wanting the services. So what we have to do is find several answers. There isn't one, but we need to find it, we need to start working on it, we need to, we need help.
Thank you. Angela?
Hi, my name is Angela Phelan Lampman. I am homeless, I'm currently staying at the Safe Sleep. First, I'd like to say homelessness is not the problem, it's the, it's the fallout of the initial problem that nobody's really comprehend, which for me, it was the last recession we went through caused the company I worked for since I graduated high school to have to lay people off. I was one of the people that got laid off because the company was growing too fast and when the recession hit, a lot of their state sites had to move to somewhere, to move, whoever provides them their service to something else was cheaper. And recently, I've been having another homeless gentleman constantly harass me, disrespect me, and he also stole and ransacked my cart, which has all of my possessions in it. But sit and lie is not an answer to any of this. I ask you to please think of something better that works for everybody involved, both the businesses in the downtown area and the homeless people that are forced to be down there.
Thank you. Julie Cooper? Barry Lee Coin? Cindy Francis? Okay, Barry? Do you want to talk?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. I am a medical social worker for the last 30 years. I've dealt with a lot of medical disability in homebound people. I had, I now harbor in my home in West Salem two formerly homeless people. We get along well, they do yard work and all, so I speak as an authority of being part of the loop. I want to suggest something that would retire some research, it's not an instant answer, it's not a do-it-all answer. We have several parkades here in town. I wonder, I'm thinking out loud with you, whether any of those parkades, when the evening hours are and the cars need to be out, let's say from 8:00 p.m. on, could be tried as an experimental pilot program, maybe for a month or two, to see how it works out, if they could have porta-potties and be tried particularly for the medically fragile, frail, disabled homeless. It's not just one community, it's many communities. It's people who've recently been evicted from their homes. It is people who have broken up with their loved ones or formerly loved ones and are now on their own and can't find a place. It's people who have disability and can't find a job to work and have very little income. We have to subdivide the so-called homeless community into various gradations and not put them all in one melting pot very unceremoniously. I want you all to take this at heart. What I suggest that the City Council take up a few meetings from now after your city staff does research to find out the feasibility of trying one shelter at a time, perhaps the Marion Shelter closest to try with five beds, 10 beds, see what the success story rates. Don't just close your door to the possibility until you test it out. I don't suggest putting a lot of money into something that's brand new. I suggest in a very small way that you do it. People have said, yes, we have to find a solution. This may be a partial solution and I want you to all in the council, act like angels and move ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Cindy Francis, followed by Becky Beeman, followed by Delana B.
Quick thing, Mayor, looks like Lori Walker is also back. She had signed up earlier.
I saw she's back, yeah, we'll catch her later.
Just making sure.
You bet.
Thank you.
My name is Cindy Francis. I live in Ward 8. I'm gonna preface my remarks by saying that we've only lived in Salem for just over three years. I feel a real connection to Salem. I love it here, I love our downtown, I love our parks. I've come to love our unsheltered neighbors. They mean a lot to me. Criminalization of being unsheltered is both ineffective and expensive. Housing first programs have been shown-
Cindy, could you kind of move up on the mic?
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay.
Housing first programs have been shown to be effective at reducing the unsheltered population while reducing the associated costs. Presently, the costs to the community include medical and mental health care, policing, shelters, and social- shelters, and social services, as well as sidewalk cleaning and trash pickup. Housing First would still cost money for medical and health care and social services, but policing and shelters would not be necessary. Several council members were elected on the promise of creating a better Salem for all citizens, not just the business community. I do support the small businesses. We, the enablers, as I have been called to my face, believe that the well-being of the businesses can be protected as well as the well-being of the unsheltered citizens in our midst. We want Salem to be known as a community that protects the well-off citizens while, do we, I'm sorry, do we want Salem to be known as a community that protects the well-off citizens while demonizing and criminalizing the very existence of her poorest citizens? Do we want more children being born on the sidewalk? There aren't enough shelter beds for all. There's not enough housing or resources. Our focus should be right now to get housing for everyone, not next week, not next month, not next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Becky, yeah. Delana?
Becky Beeman, Ward Seven. As a retired person, I have the opportunity to watch the political processes more carefully and participate in them in ways I didn't while I still worked. I've become disappointed by the undemocratic goings-on I see at the state and federal levels of legislature. I see the Majority Leader in the U.S. Senate refusing to allow bills to come to the floor for vote, denying the chance to vote the bills up or down. I see the Oregon Legislature crippled when the minority party walks out, denying a quorum so the bills cannot be voted up or down. And now here at the city level, I see city council being denied the granularity of data needed to make a responsible decision regarding the camping ban, voting it up or down. When pressed for a recommendation at the council meeting on January 21st, Jimmy Jones told the council that if he were addressing the situation, he would repeal the camping ban in the industrial zones of the city. Later in that meeting, Councilor Hoy moved, and I quote, "to direct the staff to explore the temporary lifting of the camping ban in the entire city or just in the industrial areas of the city," end quote. In response to this motion, the council should have gotten data of sufficient granularity to productively and effectively discuss the issue of allowing camping with the intention of moving the bulk of the homeless out of your downtown area, but you didn't get that information. At the January 27th meeting, discussion among the councilors again resulted in a request that city staff come back with information to support lifting the ban selectively. And rather than getting the detailed information that would have supported a responsible discussion, the council got a big lump, one chunk, lift the ban everywhere kind of thing, says all the appearance of a not-so-hidden agenda trying to force an all-or-nothing decision against the apparent wishes of the rest of the council. You are being maneuvered into an unnecessary and ill-advised sit-in lie ordinance and denied access to the data that will support a reasonable controlled lifting of the camping ban. Just as city staff proposed rules governing car camping, city staff could work with homeless advocates to develop rules to better manage the impact of more tent camping, and I have a start on that if you're interested. It is a logical fallacy to consider this to be a choice between chaos on one hand and city management of tent camps on the other. There are eighty homeless people downtown who have your attention. There are eight hundred homeless people across this city who need you to lift the camping ban. I urge you to lift the camping ban in the industrial areas of the city immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Delana? Then Larry Nassett and Joan Stembridge.
Good evening, Mayor, city councilors. My name's Delana Beaton. I live in Ward One. I want to thank and tell people who this evening have mentioned that we're all in this together. It's not a two-sided, half the citizenry against the other half. We must cooperate. That's a false setup. There's just got to be a way to work together and take wisdom from everyone. Sometimes I hear people say, where did all of these homeless people come from? A myth is they're being bussed in from elsewhere. Fact is that the intake work done over several years by the Arches Project shows that eighty percent of our identified homeless in the greater Salem area is homegrown. They're from here. I work at the housing, the shower trailer, Mondays outside Arches and Thursdays at church in the park. So, I have two days a week opportunity to speak individually with lots of homeless people. Today, we did forty-eight, I think it was, showers outside Arches. I'm a retired Salem Kaiser Career School counselor, so I, of course, immediately go where my head was, back to the schools. Where did you go to school? McKinley, Inglewood, where did, you know, South, North, Sprague? Why didn't you finish? What did you do after school? And, you know, I can't help but slip back into my high school counselor role, and I hear some very sad stories, as you can well imagine. So, to me, every one of those kids, no matter what age they are now, we failed with, but they're still ours. There's still four out of five are here. We are indeed facing a housing crisis, a homelessness crisis. We're part of a nation and a region that is facing the same, and some of the reasons are the downsizing of our once-large institutions. We had Fairview Training Center for the developmentally delayed. At its height, in nineteen fifty-eight, it had over three thousand residents. It was, you know, they had farms on what's now industrial flatland. It was a functional city. At its height, our mental hospital, Salem Hospital, housed three thousand five hundred and forty-five people. Now, we have it down to six hundred and twenty beds. Where did all those people go? I don't know where they all went, but a lot of them are on the streets downtown. That's why we have schizophrenics talking to us.
Thank you, Delana. Larry Nassett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council. I've got very little to say that hasn't already been said, but first, do no harm. Don't make this a choice between sit-in lie and doing nothing. You have better options. Positive short-term actions combined with projects already underway and planned will greatly improve the situation downtown without recourse to a draconian, possibly illegal, regulation. Passing sit-in lie now will certainly tear the community of Salem apart, and it risks unknown and unintended consequences. There's been many, many positive suggestions here of things that can be done in short term. They need to be tried. Combine the positive steps like those proposed and revisit sit-in lie in two or three months. Give positive measures a chance to work. Thank you.
Joan Stembridge, followed by Todd London, Dirk Muller. Go ahead, Joan.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett, city councilors. My name is Joan Stembridge and I live in Ward Two. I would first like to thank you all for your public service. I believe each decision made by the city council has been made with good intentions. I also believe there have been a number of negative unintended consequences from previous decisions that have brought us to where we are here tonight. The question before us is, what is the best decision you can make until the navigation center expanded and expanded shelter beds are opened? I suggest we think. Here is what we now know. We are roughly nine hundred emergency beds short. We have learned that simply forcing homeless individuals to move from one location without another option has produced negative outcomes. We also know our downtown business district is stressed financially and socially due to the large volume of homeless individuals camping without tents on the city sidewalks. Rather than pass the sit-in lie ordinance, I suggest you do the following. Number one, treat this as an emergency. Open up Marion Square Park and under Marion Street Bridge as a designated public camping space. Provide, number three, adequate toilets, sanitation stations, and public storage units at Marion Square Park, all monitored twenty-four seven. What does this option do? It provides for a reasonable place for people to move to where they can have basic human sanitation, some safety, and some decency. It moves people out of the downtown business district onto available city property near the day centers where essential services are located. This option would be a win-win-win for everyone, business district, homeless, and the city. How do you pay for this? Well, number one, you do not have to pay to fight an expensive lawsuit. Number two, you have another option. You either raise some revenue, you decide to tax everybody for parking everywhere, I don't know, raise some revenue, or you ask the city staff, very competent city staff, to look at the entire city budget and you prioritize this as a top priority. This is an emergency and it should be your top priority. This is the right thing to do. It is positive. It is healing, and it would build community trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd London.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to everybody who's here. My name is Todd London and I own a business here in Salem. We've been here for thirty, since nineteen thirty-six. And one of the interesting things about my business is I hire people who have barriers to employment. Some of those people were homeless, and they were homeless for a lot of reasons, whether they were homeless because they couldn't pay rent or they had a drug addiction, and I built my business around doing that. And I have a great little story that I want to share. This little girl was walking along the beach and she saw lots of starfish up on the shore. And she walked along and she picked up starfish and threw them in the ocean. And a man came by and says, what are you doing? She says, I'm saving the starfish. He said, you can't save them all. She picked up one and threw it in the water and says, I saved that one. We can all help. We have to look at the solutions that need to be had, and they have been presented here by a number of people. Look at those solutions and see if you can't come together and help. I'm available if you need to talk to me.
Thank you. Lori, want to come up?
Four and a half years ago, hello, Lori Walker Scan Neighborhood. I'm with the Homeless Coalition in Salem. Four and a half years ago, I retired from the Oregon State Hospital. Four years ago this month and possibly this day, I testified to the Oregon Legislature and the Oregon Health Authority as to what would happen with forty to fifty, sixty percent cuts for group homes that serve the mentally ill statewide. Coin Six did a news story at that time. I sent out a notice to the city council and the mayor today that includes that news story. And it was a news story with group home providers of what would happen with those forty to sixty percent cuts. At that time, many homes closed throughout the state, many right here in Salem. One home in Salem that closed was one that helped save one of my loved one's life. After many years on the street, our family hadn't ever given up. The mental health system in Oregon is still broken and it's getting worse every day. People need treatment. The cost of group homes versus state hospital commitment, two to five thousand dollars a month for a group home for a mentally ill person. The high cost right now at the state hospital is forty thousand a month. So, when a lot of those folks are discharged, they come to our streets now, and they have for the last several years. That's part of where the system is broken and that's part of where these people are coming from, and a lot of these people I know because I worked with them. So, the cost to Salem, a lot of finger pointing, division of residents, business people, advocates, the city council, everyone is in the middle of it all, blaming unsheltered people, making fun of them, throwing things, including fireworks, at them on the sidewalk, perception that we are better rather than compassion. I am opposed to sit-in lie. I know that we've had lots of task force. We've got lots of ideas. We've got lots of things that we can do, and the restrooms, the lockers, we know what to do. We just need to figure out a way how to do it.
Thank you, Dirk Muller. George Smith.
Hello, my name is George Smith. I'm a homeless veteran. Me and my wife are forty years. We're camped out in Wallace Park right now. Up until five months ago, we were in an apartment for fourteen years. They sold the building. The new owner sort of remodeled the entire building, threw everybody out. That was her right. But without affordable housing, I'm on a fixed income. I get Social Security. I can't afford to rent a place. I'm on the list for housing, but it's a wait-wait. Without a place to camp safely, Wallace Park's not a safe place to camp. They've already done tests out there. It contaminated from all the people camping out there before, but I can't put my wife on the sidewalk. I've got to have at least a roof over her head. I spend over a hundred dollars a month in propane to keep it warm. You know, if you guys just give us a place to camp, let us, give us a chance. I mean, we're not all drug addicts and thieves and criminals. You know, we clean up after ourselves. We police ourselves. If you just give us a place, but we need to have facilities, we've got to have restrooms, you know. People have to go to the bathroom. If you don't give them restrooms, they're going to go on the ground. That's just what it is, you know? And open up some of these industrial areas. Let us put up small camps. I know the last city council meeting, I watched it on YouTube, suggested small camps on some of these industrial sites, but a manager, an on-site manager. I volunteered. I'll manage one. My wife is willing to help, you know? We'll run them, you know, we'll police them, you know, with help from the police department. We, you know, we're willing to do anything we can. We just need a place. You can't just keep, you know, sweep this under the rug. We're going to be a big lump under that rug, you know? We just can't go away. I've lived in Salem over fifty-five years. I'm sixty-three years old. You're going to have to kill me to get me leave. This is my home. I've been there forever. I ain't going, you know? Just give us a place where we can set up our tent, you know? That's all we want. I mean, I have my wife, my three cats, and my dog. You know, we were a family. We was in this house fourteen years. I've had my oldest cat twelve years. I can't throw him out. I can't throw the wife out, you know? We just need a place to go, you know? And we don't expect you to, you know, give us much. Just let us camp on some ground till we get some housing, you know? Just a couple porta-potties, you know? I know it's going to cost a lot of money, but my gosh, we're worth it. I say, I'm a retired veteran. I tried to do my part, you know? You guys try and do yours. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Mike Herron. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. No, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Good evening, city council. Mayor Chuck Bennett. My name's Mark Connect. I do a lot of advocacy work for veterans and people with disabilities in this community. Even with the new Union Gospel Mission going down there, they're going to house about three hundred, is that my understanding? Something between about three hundred. Well, anyway, anyway, even though the affordable housing, we need more affordable housing in this community, and not only that, that the government keeps cutting back on federal housing, housing and that sort of thing, and, you know, why can't we build a, up there where they're toward the old, toward the old General Hospital down- toward the old General Hospital down? The hospital still owns that property. We just don't have enough rehab centers in this town to deal with all this mental illness and drunk and alcohol addiction. But, you know, it all boils down to money. The federal government can't fix all the roads. But I admire the city council, a lot of ideas have been thrown out here, here, and I'm available if I can help with some more ideas, you know, and so on. I should have had a written testimony. But, you know, our pastor at our church is giving us, doing a four-week series on what the Bible has to say about homeless people. And we have a study on that. He does a thing on Sunday night at six o'clock down at the First Baptist Church, and if you want to come, you're welcome to come. Our doors are open, our pastor even goes over and helps clean up over there around Friday at a couple days a week.
Thank you, Mark, very much. Mike Heron?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council members. My name's Mike Heron. I'm speaking on behalf of Vips Industries, owner of the Grand Hotel in Salem, Phoenix Inns, Bentley's Grill, and manager of the Salem Convention Center. We're here to urge the council to support or to vote for the ordinance. I would echo but not repeat a lot of the concerns that you've heard tonight from other business owners in downtown. You know, you've heard it ad nauseam. I don't know how many rules there are governing sidewalks in Salem. Perhaps City Attorney could let us know. I know it's a lot. The ones that I'm familiar with, if I want to build a sidewalk, I need a permit. I need the city's permission if I want to put a public bench outside my hotel or restaurant. I need a permit if I want to operate a vendor cart on a sidewalk downtown. I need a permit to place a sandwich board on the sidewalk in front of my business downtown. I need a permit to host a sidewalk event to raise money for a charity downtown. I need city permission to serve drinks on the sidewalk during the summers. Under SRC 78250, I even need a permit to use this space under my sidewalk. Basically, if anyone wants to do anything that benefits the community or their business, and they want to do it on the sidewalk, it's regulated. They need a permit or permission from the city. We don't always like these rules, but they make sense. They're there to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. This ordinance is no different. It regulates conduct on public sidewalks that is detrimental to the community's health, safety, and welfare. It just makes sense, and I strongly encourage the council to adopt the ordinances drafted.
Thank you. Bob Francis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. Appreciate the time. I'm from Ward Eight. My name's Fayda Meyer, and I want to applaud Mr. Boo, TJ Sullivan, Jason, and Mike, and a few other people who have spoken. I couldn't agree with you more in terms of purpose. One of the, there's an onus on both sides. One is the responsibility of people to behave themselves and conduct themselves appropriately. That's just a given, and I was homeless, I grew up that way, and so I know you don't have to conduct yourself the way that people are conducting themselves. And I don't believe that everyone who has a job, who maybe works three jobs to keep their house, is white privileged. I think they might be just hard workers, and I just want to stand corrected on that. As a sixty-five, almost sixty-six-year-old woman, I have to work three jobs to keep my house and keep my bills in order, and sometimes not so easy to do that. Number three, I'd like to acknowledge all the good work that's being done with United Way, with Union Gospel Mission, with the Arches Program, with Grace House, Oxford Houses here in town. There are so many wonderful pieces going on, but they're not enough, and it doesn't meet our emergency crisis right now. We have an emergency crisis, and we have something that would solve it. We have a building that's owned by the state of Oregon. It's called Hillcrest, and I've dubbed it Hopecrest because it actually would house four hundred and eighty people. It has a gymnasium, it has two, two commercial-sized kitchens, it has a cafeteria, it has a library, it has large-room housing, it has classrooms. It has so many opportunities for people to be educated and trained. One of the problems right now with just sheltering only, without training people, assessing people, is no one has a sense of purpose and something to do. I believe that every person is not entitled to a house, but they're entitled to the opportunity to earn a house, and a shelter is only a shelter, it's not a house. And this would have a wet shelter. That means people who are using, and I could go into one section, and it would have a dry shelter, which is a place for people who want to be clean and sober, want to be educated, want to move forward in their lives. As a former homeless kid, as a former illiterate teen, I am a person here, standing here to tell you, it is doable and possible. So it could happen if the political will were there. Barriers have been put up, like code enforcement, barriers like zoning. It's PH, Public Health Zone right now. It does have water on the property. It is also, those codes have been bent for other people, it can be bent for the homeless. These people deserve a bent rule. If you're gonna make a rule, make a rule that they can have shelter. Fifty-five degree heating right now for everyone now. It's called Hopecrest. I hope that you will pay attention to this and not ignore it because it's been brought up before. It can be a hub for co-located services. I don't believe that any of the partners that I mentioned before should be excluded from being a part of that, to assess for people to come into their places.
Thank you, Fay.
So it is a shelter, and that's all it is. Thank you.
Bob Francis, then Joel Blount?
Good evening. My name is Bob Francis. I live in West Salem. I'm a retired United Methodist pastor, and all those years that I was a pastor, I learned not a lot, really, other than that, other than that we are all human beings here. We all share this earth, we share this life. There is no person better or worse than any other person. We all require dignity. I just want to ask you something here. How many people here have daughters? I have two daughters. Yeah. How many have sons? Yeah. How many have brothers or sisters? I would like you to imagine something. Imagine that person living down on Liberty Street right now. Imagine your son or your daughter laying down on concrete, surrounded by filth, being urinated on. We see people drive by and say the most vulgar, horrible things to fellow human beings, people who are no different than they, than these people who are driving by. I would like you to imagine what you want to be done for your daughter, or your son, or your brother, or your sister. What would you like to happen? Do you want them to be given a Sit-Li ordinance where they have to walk around all day trying to find someplace to sit? Oh, no, wait a minute, you can't really sit, you gotta just keep walking. And then maybe you'll get a place to sleep at night, but nothing over your head, you won't be able to have any toilets. There's a person who actually drove by, who took a picture of one of the people taking a leak out there on the sidewalk. Why? Because she didn't have a toilet, and posted that upon social media. That's shameful. That's shameful. Folks, let's do something about this. These are fellow human beings who deserve respect and dignity. Thank you.
Thank you. Joel Blount? Pamela Lyons-Nelson? Hazel Patton?
Thank you. My name is Joel Blount. I live in Ward Three, and I'm a business owner in the downtown core. I'm here to support the sidewalk ordinance tonight. We've had a number of run-ins in our business downtown. We've had our bathrooms just sort of demolished, like a wild animal went in there with toilet paper and hand towels and air freshener and everything, just kind of torn apart for no reason. My wife is also scared to come downtown, and maybe that is a perception thing, but that's what she tells me, she doesn't feel comfortable coming downtown with our kids. And I just want to support the police department, and I believe that they're doing their best to be compassionate with the folks downtown and to direct them to the services that are here, and I commend and thank Mayor Bennett and the council, and all the city staff, and all the organizations that are putting in the time and the resources to try and find solutions. I do believe that there is a difference between folks that have found themselves in a situation where they're homeless, and they want help, and they want resources, and those that choose not to have those resources. And I stand in front of you in a suit and look like maybe I've grown up with wealth, but I didn't, I grew up in poverty, and I have family members, those siblings that were just referenced, that are dealing without shelter. And I know that in each of those cases, for my family members, it's addiction issues, it's not mental health issues, and we know that everything that we've done to support those family members, through giving them places to stay, through trying to watch out for their kids, everything we feel like we could do from our side didn't lead to them wanting to find sobriety, and didn't lead to them wanting to do the things they needed to do to keep their children and to stay in their home. And so I just want to remind folks that we can provide all sorts of services, and as they say, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink that water. And I still believe that there's a lot of discussion and argument here with this group where we're just talking about two different groups of people. We're talking about those folks like the gentleman that's a vet over here who just can't quite cover rent versus folks that really are not ready to deal with an addiction issue or don't want to deal with taking their medications, and they're just two different issues to deal with. And I think in order to try and at least move the city forward and help some of these individuals to find the resources they need and not enable them to stay downtown without resources, we need to support the police department, and we need to support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pamela Lyons-Nelson, Ward One. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Joel and I met just as we were coming in, getting ready to sign up, and he said, "I think we'll be on opposite sides of this issue," but I'm not so much hearing that we're on opposite sides of the issue. What I'm hearing is that we have two different lights shining on this disco ball of many different facets. And one of the facets is it's not so much that people can't, don't want to treat their addiction, it's that the appropriate treatment isn't there for many, many, many people. I'm a mental health professional, I have been for about forty years, forty-five years. But when I came here tonight to say with just a few remarks, one of them is that we have residential shelters, and you know the names, Samanka Salvation Army, Women at the Well, Grace House, Family Promise UGM. These are residential shelters. They take people off the streets and help them move into a different life. They're almost always full. When they aren't full, there's just a handful of beds available in these. And what there isn't is, and it takes a lot of walking and checking in, and then trying to figure out how to get back to where there's something, someplace else to be, because you have to be in the right place at the right time to actually get one of those beds. Few of those emergency shelters, few of those shelters have emergency mats, and those that do, people don't know about, people who need them don't even know about them. So Sit-Li, for one thing, will not be effective. It may look like it's effective. Sit-Li's a fad. It's a municipal fad, and it's been going on, and there have been municipalities that have tried it, and tried it, and tried it, and in the end, they aren't getting the results that they thought they would get. And now they're saying, "Now what do we do?" Well, we don't impose a camping ban. We don't do some of the things that look like things we could grab at to solve this problem because that won't work. We know what we need. We know what we need. We need housing, and we need shelter, and that's really what's going to solve it. And the more we turn away from that, the more we cannot divide our populations up into those that can move right into there and those who have an addiction or a mental health problem that need to be there. But for you business owners who thinks that, who think that Sit-Li is going to work for you, I can assure you, it will not. It'll move the population, and then there will be the boomerang, just like there was with the camping ban.
Thank you, Pamela. Hazel Patton?
There you go.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Hazel Patton, and I'm with Salem Main Street Association, and we support the Sit-Li ordinance. It's been interesting to hear the ideas here, and I really appreciate what everybody has in their hearts, but our downtown is in a crisis situation. I don't think we can put this off any longer. The impact of having homeless folks living in our downtown streets is taking its toll on businesses, on our community, and on those folks that have to live down there. And something must be done, and I propose it needs to be done now. The last time this ordinance was proposed, opponents pointed out that there were very few places for the homeless to go from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and that's true. I'm asking the council to consider, as others have, including Joan Stonebridge, who I didn't talk to, to open up Marion Square Park temporarily to let folks camp on that, in that facility. Personally, and I learned that we can donate, I personally would be willing to donate a porta-potty to be down there on that park, recognizing that that is a need. And Salem Main Street conducted a survey of our downtown businesses last year, and they said that they too would be willing to contribute financially, financially if we can solve this problem. I think maybe it's time to let our businesses be a part of this solution. So I ask you, please pass this ordinance and open up Marion Square Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbie Taylor? Is that Barb Taylor? Then Ken Dahlke, you're up again, Ken. You want to talk about a four-way stopper, or a stoplight?
I don't know if anybody else wants to hear about that.
They're gonna, they're gonna. So, share it if you want to. Mark, you're gonna be after that. Okay, go ahead.
All right. I'm Barbie Taylor. I live walking distance from downtown on Summer Street, I'm pretty sure that makes me Ward One. I shared my displeasure with the city council the last time that I spoke to you, and I haven't seen much improvement, I gotta say. I was hoping for a little more after the last meeting. I feel like you created the situation that is going on under the, under the awnings down there by enacting the camping ban, and I also want to say, I've lived in Salem for most of my fifty-one years, and I own a home in Salem, and I've worked at Nordstrom in my youth. I also think you all should know that everybody who works at Nordstrom understands Amazon is their biggest competitor, and probably all retailers should know that, probably. So that is affecting your downtown businesses also. So I'm just jumping all over the place here, but I feel like you're responsible for the situation that we have going on downtown, and furthermore, I'm concerned about what a Sit-Li ban is going to cause. I'm so close to downtown, you can walk, throw a stick at it, and I love my neighborhood, I love Salem, I love all the things you've done to the facades to make it beautiful. I also am highly compassionate, and the situation is horrible. So I am worried that not only are you caused, when you have stressed a portion of the community out to this point where they've been harassed from their previous tenting to a camping ban, now a Sit-Li, they will be desperate. They're already desperate, now they're gonna be hopeless and desperate, and our homes are their next stop. Don't fool yourself. This will not improve your lifestyle, especially if you live close to downtown, and this should be considered, not if you don't care about the homeless people, okay? If you do care about the homeless people, this should really matter to you, but this is going to have consequences. You can see the consequences that, oh, also, voting is going to help you all. You can see the consequences that, oh, also, voting is going to help you all and now we know who to boycott. Multiple things we've learned at this meeting, so great. Thank you for providing the names of your businesses. And I, my skill isn't marketing, that's my skill set and I intend to use it to campaign against anyone who votes to enact a sit lie ban.
Great, thank you. Ken Dahlke.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Council. I'm here to discuss a concern I, and many other neighbors have, with an intersection in West Salem. Sorry to be changing the topic here, but anyway, it's kind of a safety concern at the intersection of Eola Drive and Doakes Ferry. Many accidents have happened there, they don't get reported. The big, the big problem there is that many people, it's like a 45 mile an hour speed limit on Doakes Ferry and people just don't see the stop signs on Doakes Ferry when they're traveling north and south. I've witnessed it myself many times. And they're going 50 miles an hour, you know, when they're going through there usually. And if they broadside somebody, it's going to be a huge problem. And I realize, I don't think there's been any real major injuries there yet or we're trying to, I'd like to see that avoided and any fatalities. But I know there's many other intersections within the Salem area that probably have, I know you guys are working on them too, other issues with safety. And it's got to be, I know people just have to be defensive drivers too when they're going through that intersection. But anyway, I have talked to Public Works about this and, I'm trying to think if, you don't, I don't want to say here. He's, with Public Works, he's promised to put up a red blinking light over a year ago. And that's the main reason I came down here tonight was just to see if Public Works could follow through. Tony, Tony Martin's his name, I've talked to him many times. And just before something does happen there, and like I say, there's lots of, our lack of funding, you know, but there has been a lot of development up in that area and a lot of SDCs have been paid. And maybe some of that money could be found to go towards the blinking light. But anyway, I almost get the blinking light here. Thank you very much. That's a buddy.
Thanks, Ken. Peter, what's the, what's the story on that light?
The blinking light is on the way.
Okay. How soon?
I don't know.
I mean--
The city traffic engineer, Kevin Hodgman, came to my office a couple of weeks ago and we were talking about it and I think we're going to, you know, we're working on getting it installed.
Wrong on it.
But I don't have a schedule for you this evening.
Okay. As soon as you do, I think it'd be helpful. I'm sure Counselor Lewis and the Neighborhood Association would appreciate hearing about it.
We'll report it to them.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mark Kudus, I'm the Vice Chair of the West Salem Neighborhood Association. I live in Ward 8. A couple of things we're concerned of is we'd like to see more police presence in West Salem instead of just one officer in the evening. We pay a lot of money towards the city of Salem's budget. That's a big deal. Additionally, emergency assets on our side of the bridge, you know, Cascadia would be a major, major event for not only us, but the entire population of Salem. Those bridges go down, you're going to have debris, you'll have a dam downtown, water could be in this building almost certainly. So, fire from the fire department, what are we going to do there? You know, there'll be fires. That's where we have a large population. So additionally, you know, wells, maybe even an ORO plant for emergency water services and so forth. Our next Neighborhood Association meeting is the 16th of March in Ross. And the 7th of March, I do a Bridge Committee meeting. We urge anybody and all to attend. And we look forward to getting the city council's vote towards going forward with the bridge, another bridge for West Salem crossing. I'm not going to touch too much on the homeless, obviously, that's been talked about quite a bit here. There's no question Hillcrest is a place we could fit people. There's 45 acres, we could get a bus service there and they could be camping there overnight, get them out of downtown, they could be housed, they could have a roof over their heads instantly. I mean, it's owned by the state. It's time to get with the program on that. But anyway, yeah, and there's a big difference between street people and the people that just clearly are just not willing to go and what's their plan and we inventoried them. Someone spoke that would worked at the state mental facility, she said it was 80/20. Where are the other 20% of those people from? And maybe we need to see if we can find a way to get them back to where they came from, to some degree. We don't want to be as a capital for all the homeless to be, you know, attract everybody to come, you know, live here indefinitely. And we can't house everybody, there's only so many facilities. Anyway, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mark. Okay, Counselor Hoy, we'll move on to consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second by Kaser.
Thank you. The consent calendar includes item 3.1A, the January 21st, 2020 revised city council minutes. The vote on the substitute motion for item 3.1A was revised to reflect a vote for Council Nordike. Item 3.1B, February 10th, 2020 draft city council minutes. Item 3.1C, February 18th, 2020 draft city council work session minutes. Item 3.2A, amendments to the transportation and wastewater system development charge eligible projects list. Item 3.3A, approval of travel Salem 2020 through 2025 strategic plan. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
All right, yay.
He is still there.
Motion passes. Okay. I have our public hearing.
The city council will conduct a public hearing concerning the formation of Gaffin Road reimbursement district. The criteria applicable to the decision is SRC 200.315. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first followed by public testimony. Public testimony should be directed at the criteria applicable to the decision. Individuals testifying must provide their name and address or ward number. Public testimony shall be provided as follows. The applicant's limited to 15 minutes. The Neighborhood Association is limited to five minutes. Other interested persons are limited to three minutes. And the applicant may have up to seven minutes rebuttal testimony limited to issues raised during the public testimony.
I guess we're ready to go?
Yes, go.
Good evening all. My name is Glenn Davis, I'm the Chief Development Engineer with the Public Works Department. I acknowledge we have a room full of people that are not here for this issue, so I'll try to make it brief. Before I get into the details of the proposed district before us, I'd like to open with an explanation of reimbursement districts in general. The foundation of a district starts when there's an area of town that lacks key infrastructure. And then as development proposals come along, it becomes apparent that there's these high upfront costs that are turned into a development roadblock. So the reimbursement district is a way of sharing those reimbursement, those infrastructure costs in a way that allows all properties to benefit from the infrastructure involved, removing that roadblock and allowing the development projects to move forward because often the first development project cannot front all the money needed to make the infrastructure work. So that's the general idea of the reimbursement district, to share cost among a group of developments. So with that, I want to define a couple terms. First is SDC eligibility. SDC stands for System Development Charge. And they're paid by all developments in Salem. It so happens that all developments pay in and some can actually get payouts through reimbursements. And they get those when they build major infrastructure here with their developments. That infrastructure eligibility, the SDC eligibility, is something that our, we have an administrative rule that dictates. And for this particular reimbursement district, staff estimates that about, just over half of this improvement will be SDC eligible. The next term I want to explain is equivalent length average daily trip, or just ADT. And this is the measurement that's used to collect transportation system development charges in Salem. The concept of ADTs is that one trip starts from a destination and ends at a destination, that's one trip. So you go from home to work, that's one trip. Now, what makes it complicated, I want to explain briefly, is that when you go from home to work, you don't necessarily just go to work, you may stop at a coffee stand or a gas station. And so that is still one trip, but the way the process works is it accounts for those, what are called pass-by trips as part of it. So everyone who pays transportation SDCs pays fairly because these impacts are all adjusted as part of the program that we have for SDC payments. So that's, that's the method used to collect this reimbursement district. I want to explain that and we'll get there in more detail in a minute. So now getting to the details of the district. We have a vicinity map of the Gaffin Road area. On the screen, we have Highway 22 shown east to west. It's somewhat parallel by Gaffin Road. Corden has an overpass crossing Highway 22. And there's an interchange at Gaffin and Highway 22 there at the bottom of the screen. I've also shown on this map the urban growth boundary, which is in red. And then I actually have highlighted it as well so you can see, because the Corden Road actually is part of the urban growth boundary, so you can see the, clearly where the boundary is. So the subject of the reimbursement district is the street improvements there, shown in black on Gaffin Road. It goes from Gaia Street to Corden Road. And I've taken a couple of photos at either end of the street to just get a picture of what it looks like. This one is on Corden Road, this is from street view, on near Corden Road looking southeast. And it's primarily a two-lane road with no bicycle or pedestrian facilities. And then on the other side, this is at Gaia Street looking to the northwest. When the Seño Solar Project had built, they did some improvements along the frontage. It still lacks some facilities and sidewalks and such. So those are, that's the condition of the current street. So as we look at the map, I emphasized a couple of things here. I show on, the city limits are shown in green to get a picture of that clearly. And then I wanted to also point out that the Gaffin Road benefits the area in two ways. For those who live along Gaffin Road, they would go northwest to Corden to provide access to the, to the north and west. And then also, the properties in the area also can come to the, to travel to the southeast toward the Gaffin 22 interchange. And I bring that up because it's a benefit to an area, actually west of Corden Road benefits from that, this section of road because of that Highway 22 access. So now I'm showing on the screen the proposed district boundary. So it takes into account the urban growth area on the north and the east, Highway 22 in the south. And it does move into some vacant property west of 22 because of that benefit coming from Highway 22 access. So based on that boundary, I'll show briefly how the district fees are calculated. The estimated total cost of the project for the Gaffin Road improvements is 5.5 million and just over half of that is eligible for SDCs. Assistant Traffic Engineer estimated that we have just over 7,000 ADT that will be increased in the district over the life of the district. So that results then in a cost per trip of $757 per ADT. And I'll mention again, the ADT is the way that we calculate transportation SDCs already. So it is a calculation that we already do and we'll just add to that as part of this district boundary. So lastly, I want to explain the way that the reimbursement district works with SDCs to make sure it's clear as the fees are collected. So on the screen, I show an example of a project that would generate 10 ADT. And in that case, we see that the reimbursement district fee is paid and then the transportation SDC is actually subtracted from that reimbursement fee. So the total fee is, in this example, is $7,570, is less than double the SDC because of that credit that comes. So it's not, in addition to SDCs, it has that factor that's subtracted. So with that, staff recommends approval, adoption of Resolution 2020-5 to form their Gaffin Road reimbursement district. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Is anyone here to testify on this reimbursement district? Any questions for staff? Close the public hearing. House Nenek, is this yours?
It is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move the staff recommendation to approve the reimbursement district.
Second. Second by Hoy. Any discussion?
Just that we've done a few of these now. I think we're becoming more familiar with them. Again, it's for major infrastructure projects and they can get some money back if somebody develops and if people don't want to pay it, they don't have to develop until after that expires and if they do develop, it actually is a benefit to them as well, so.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Going to go to Special Orders of Business, Counselor Kaser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a pretty long motion with details, so I'll read slowly so that everyone can--
Did you make a copy for everybody?
I did not, no. That's what I'm going to read--
In the future, we'll each kind of--
Yeah, in the future, we'll do that, but I--
That'd be good.
I'm going to read it slowly, but it's long and, so here we go. I move to direct staff to bring back an ordinance bill for first reading at the March 9th City Council meeting to regulate sitting and laying on public sidewalks consistent with Attachment 1 of the staff report with the following clarifications. Number one, the draft ordinance shall not include a link to the crime prevention districts so that a violation of the restrictions shall not subject a person to an exclusion order. And number two, the ordinance will not be effective until, A, the availability of outdoor or indoor day space protected from the elements that would be open to the public during the hours the sit lie restrictions would be in effect from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. B, the provision of secured toilet facilities at this day space. And C, staff shall, within 30 days of passage, present a plan for the provision of permanent public restrooms in the downtown that may be feasibly maintained.
Second. Second by Hoy. Do you want to discuss your motion?
I do. I have a few, a few comments and I've written some of them out and been thinking a lot about this the last several months. I think all of us have, honestly. Everybody I've talked to on the council, this is the thing that is on everyone's mind. And I really truly hope everyone here tonight, the public, business owners, everyone in the community understands that this weighs so heavily on our brains. It's the thing that when I wake up in the middle of the night, this is what I start thinking about. This is what I talk with my husband about the most and my mom and my dad and my sisters and everybody in my life practically about. So I hope that the public very much realizes that these are very tough decisions and we do not come to them lightly. We do not come to them without talking with others and they weigh on us incredibly. No one I've talked to in this community is happy with what's going on. This includes absolutely everybody, regardless of their opinion about what should be done. I already know regardless of whatever action the city takes tonight or in the future, many will not be happy with that decision. Everyone has the right to use public spaces. These are shared spaces, they must be protected as shared spaces. And our city has laws and rules in place to protect everyone's rights, including the health and safety of our residents. And the city can add, modify, or remove those laws to respond to changes in our city. Through these laws and rules, our city government regulates what activities residents can engage in, in the public, where these activities can take place, and also during the times of the day or week they can occur. For example, we create parks, green spaces, plazas, public buildings, where we want people to congregate and recreate. These spaces have times when they are open to the public and for what activities and times when they are closed. We install benches in places to sit where we want people to relax. We install toilets in public spaces where we want people to go to the bathroom. We create rights of way for the movement of people and vehicles on bicycles and wheelchairs or on foot. This ordinance and the conditions described that will need to be met before it takes effect is a proposal to achieve the balance between maintaining the rights of everyone to use our shared public spaces and to maintain everyone's rights to have healthy and safe public spaces. This ordinance does not result in a criminal penalty for violation. The conditions of this ordinance's enactment have to be met before it's enacted as well. Unlinking this ordinance from the crime prevention districts is consistent with the camping ordinance that recently took effect. These ordinances need to work together by being enforced in the same way across the entire city. The city has taken so many actions in the last three years-- The city has taken so many actions in the last three years to help resolve the homelessness crisis, and I really, truly believe the city is reaching the limits of what it can do with the authority and the resources available to us. Our city, nearly every other city and county in Oregon, needs help from the state and the federal government to fully resolve our homelessness crisis. This is not something that the taxpayers of Salem can fix on our own in the long term. Our state and federal governments have the authority and resources to do things that our city just simply and plainly cannot do. So again, I implore everyone, as I have at previous meetings, I hope every single person who's testified here tonight about this issue also begins to lobby in contact their state representative, their state senators, their federal representatives, their federal senators. What you say here is great, and we hear it repeatedly. I hope you're getting out of this city council chamber to other people who can also help and do things that we just simply can't. And I think that this ordinance is really trying to strike the balance and thread the needle, as I've said in previous meetings.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to sign on to and co-sign with everything that Counselor Kaiser just said. I can't say it any better than she just did. I do want to highlight one issue, however, and that's the question about when the services are available at the dayroom space. There are several options in the works for that. This is not a tactic to delay this thing by any means. We think that those options are imminent, and should be, there should be a viable plan ready to go before this ordinance actually comes back to us for first reading. So we're trying to give maximum flexibility to the staff to solve the problem. We think that they will be able to do so by our next meeting, so I just wanted people to be clear on that.
Okay. Mr. Manager, do you want to, just for a second, you mentioned a number of things that were kind of in the works. What have we got going on that can deal with Counselor Kaiser's suggestions? How are we going to deal with that, hopefully in a timely manner, I think?
Thank you, Mayor. For Council's March 9th meeting, staff can have implementation plans, implementation information for each of the conditions that are part of Counselor Kaiser's motion. The day center hours, restroom access, and then a plan for, I apologize, I forget the exact word you used, Counselor Kaiser, but the permanent additional restroom or restrooms for the future. So certainly by March 9th, we can, before March 9th, we can have that for council as part of your consideration of first reading.
Okay. Yes, Counselor, go.
I just wanted to clarify one piece of what you were proposing, specifically, I think it was 2A, maybe? Can you read that part again?
I can, yes. So, number 2, the ordinance will not be effective until (a) the availability of outdoor or indoor day space protected from the elements that would be open to the public during the hours the sit/lie restrictions would be in effect from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Okay. Counselor Nanki?
If I could comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, sure.
Thank you. Just to clarify, what we're looking at there is, in other words, we're not going to restrict people from sitting and lying until they have an alternative location to go. That's the idea. So we won't, the ban won't actually take effect until there's somewhere else reasonably closed for people to go. That's the idea.
Counselor Kaiser?
If I can, as Counselor Hoy said after my comments, is the, we are, I think, so close to having some of that available. There's the Arches Day Center, and I can't remember exactly how many places, but I believe it's, could be up to 95 people, could be there during the day. This motion provides staff the flexibility to provide other spaces also, if we need to, that are outdoor, covered, something for people to, especially during the months where it's raining, and you're not just going to go sit at the park because it's cold and wet, you could have a place that's sheltered. But that's why the motion's providing that flexibility.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Effective dates. First reading would be next...
March 9th.
Which means then the second meeting in March would be second reading, and then 30 days from that, unless we can do an emergency clause, correct?
Unless you can, right, unless you can arrive at a conclusion on March 9th unanimously to go forward with a second reading on March 9th, and then you could speed the process up. But you'll need unanimity to move forward on the 9th, beyond first reading.
But then, without any kind of an emergency declaration or order, or is what we have in place, it would be 30 days after second reading, correct?
Correct. So ordinance is take effect 30 days after second reading unless you have an emergency clause in the ordinance.
So it would be April 8th, at best case if we did both readings at the March 9th meeting.
Unless you want to attach an emergency clause, and you can decide that the next meeting, you don't have to decide that now.
Sure, I think we can talk about it next meeting when we have more information. And I think, you know, just for those who are really unfamiliar with how this stuff works, is nothing actually goes into effect tonight. This is to direct staff to come back with an ordinance prepared so that we can consider it, and I know all the council members do this, I'm mostly just saying this for the benefit of the public. So March 9th will be when we'll consider an ordinance that's in draft form.
And potentially amended if need be with whatever. It could be an emergency clause or anything else, so, yeah, Counselor.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Counselor Kaiser for bringing this motion forward, and I will be fully supportive of an emergency clause, assuming we get the pieces of the puzzle together as it should be. This year is a year of hope for me and for our city because we know of all the positive changes that are coming. And tonight further inspired me because we saw a lot of compassion in the room, compassion from folks who traditionally come from very different points of view on homelessness. I think the city of Salem is a city full of people who care, full of people who want to see all people treated with dignity. And so I, for one, am excited at the prospect of this. We have in the past been entreated to this false equivalency, this false either/or. You can either support the business community, or you can support the homeless but not both, and that's not true. We know that a number of our business community owners support homelessness in their own way. They hire them as their employees, they donate. We know that a lot of our homeless are misunderstood and that they work. We know that a lot of our homeless are seniors on fixed incomes. We know that a lot of our homeless are children. So I am pleased to see what I see us moving past, which is enough with treating homeless people like a political football. If our state legislature can get on board with unanimously agreeing to emergency shelter funding, then we should too. I think that what Counselor Kaiser has proposed is a solution that will give everyone what they want as best we can with the limited resources we can, a better place for our homeless that is not on our downtown storefronts until even more permanent housing and shelter options become available. I really appreciated hearing earlier from Hazel Patton. She indicated that several businesses are willing to contribute financially to the solution, donating porta-potties and other resources. That's the Salem that I know. That's the Salem that I grew up in. So I do see this as an opportunity for us to work together. And I want to remind folks that if we follow through with this proposal, this is, there are significant cost savings as opposed to a straight-up sit/lie. Included in your materials today with some very detailed reports, I will not go to the trouble of reading them all, but I like to point out to folks the business case for the alternatives to a pure sit/lie, for the alternatives to criminalizing homelessness. And I'll just read one statistic out of this massive tome of documents. This is from the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness. It says, "City spend on average $87 per day to jail a person compared to $28 per day to provide them with shelter." Listen, folks, the business case is in support of the evidence-based solutions that we have been promoting, the Housing First Solutions, the Navigation Center, a low-to-no-barrier shelter. These are what experts like Jimmy Jones at Arches and the other community partners that I've been talking to have all been preaching, because this is actually a more effective and cost-appropriate solution. Paying our police to spend lots of their time policing folks from one end of the street to another, into our neighborhoods, as we heard testimony about earlier, this is a superior option. And I appreciate the fact that it takes into account the fact that we don't have all the answers yet, that new facilities are coming online within the next weeks or months. We have to be responsible and flexible and look at the data. So I look forward to supporting this resolution. I look forward to us continuing to find that common ground that we so sorely need any time that there's a crisis. There are opportunities to burn every single bridge, or there are opportunities to come together, and I am seeing us coming together right now, and that is what I'm going to be focusing on. The only other thing I would say, there are some folks who are concerned that Salem is having a homeless crisis. We are. We're not the only city in Oregon. We're not the only state on the West Coast. This pack of materials points out a number of states where the number of shelter beds is far too few, and they're not just states on the West Coast. These are places like North Dakota, North Carolina, New Mexico, Illinois, and Oklahoma. This is a national crisis, folks.
Thank you.
So I applaud everyone who is willing to work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I want to call your attention, we have 15 minutes left. Go ahead.
My feedback on what's being proposed is kind of wary at the moment, given that we don't have, until we actually have the, I guess, the next staff report coming on March 9th with more details about this. I am happy to hear, though, that some of the things that Counselor Kaiser wanted to implement were actually things that the Downtown Homeless Solutions Task Force had recommended, specifically availability of public toilets 24 hours, seven days a week. I'm not sure if that indoors, that space that you were referring to will actually be the equivalent of a hygiene center, or is it more of just of a day space for people to reside in?
I think staff will have more details, but from my understanding is, it would be a day center, and I think on March 9th, we'll probably hear some more from the city manager and Director Rutherford, but I think the hope is that we can also extend some hours there to further in the evening. And then I think there is a glimmer of hope if the legislature would help assist us, that we might be able to make that facility 24/7 in the future as well, so. But I think we're going to get more information in a couple of weeks.
Well, there would also be the possibility of incorporating whether or not that space would also hold people's personal property, because that's another thing that came up within the community, is that they may have, you may have a space, but if they do not have a secure location to put their property, it's not going to work.
Yeah. If I may, yeah. Thank you, thank you, Counselor. Yes, a very good discussion, certainly the staff report for March 9th will have the details. I think those details will also guide council's decision regarding effective date, and the information will include storage. I have asked Kristin, Director Rutherford, to prepare information for council's consideration to add storage capacity in the downtown, so that will be part of the staff report, including the conditions that are part of the motion.
Counselor Nanki?
Just quick, regarding the restroom facilities, knowing that we've had issues with those in the past as far as destruction and setting them on fire and what have you, will your report actually address ongoing protection, I suppose, is the best way or design elements to prevent the vandalism and destruction we've seen in the past?
If not prevent, certainly deter, so, yes and yes.
Cool, thanks.
Yes. And in terms of the day center, will this definitely be on the weekends as well, since there aren't weekend availability right now? Is that, yes, okay.
It's the hour, as I understood the motion, it would be the hours that are alternating with the sit/lie ordinance is a control of sidewalk, control of, thank you, control of sidewalk use. Okay? Yes, Counselor?
I just want to mention that I appreciate what Counselor Kaiser was saying about finding a balance, because I know several of us have been very strongly opposed to the sit/lie, and that really we need to look at compassion and helping these, helping folks who are unsheltered with services rather than enforcement. And so I think this is a move towards compromise, which I appreciate in seeing a public body do, so, thank you.
Yeah, I think it represents too, a sharing of the public space. I mean, it's just real simple. We, right now, under the current conditions, you can't share the public space completely in certain parts of downtown. This allows us to share them. So I really think it's a really good solution. Probably the only question I have, and will continue to have, is whether the enforcement mechanism works, and I think we'll just have to monitor that and expect a report at some point on how it's going, Chief, since your guys will probably be the folks that will have to do at least some of the frontline work, although hopefully advocates will help in this setting up some sort of really, and I say this understanding, it's an odd way to say it, but somehow normalizing this routine. Although I do notice downtown that a lot of times, about seven, between 7:00 and 8:00, generally, it's mainly possessions, not people, in the areas that are in question as folks move into some of the places you can get something to eat. So hopefully, there'll be some sort of a reasonable routine developed there. Okay, we all ready to vote? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
Okay, Louis is a no. Motion passes. Thank you, Jim, for sitting in.
You're welcome.
Information reports. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to comment on Item 6.2, the vehicle camping program. I had been very hopeful that this would actually result in some new opportunities for people to reside, and so far, not one program has stepped forward and volunteered their space, so I'm a little bit disappointed. I would like to explore ways to extend it, but without people actually stepping forward, then there's really no point.
Well, maybe with the alternative little sidewalk space available during the day, there'll be some more interest. Okay, nothing else, we'll move on then to first reading.
Ordinance Bill Number 520, an ordinance declaring certain territory located at the southeast corner of Kubler Boulevard Southeast and 36th Avenue Southeast, annexed to the city of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District and Turner Fire District.
Okay, Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move staff recommendation.
Second. Second by Hoy, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Second reading. Need a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move we in gross ordinance Bill 1-20, amending the Salem Revised Code to update design standards for multifamily housing and related regulations, and conduct second reading.
Second? Second, Nanki? Okay.
We had to make a motion to amend it.
Okay, now the, yeah. Okay, Ordinance Bill Number 120, an ordinance relating to the regulation of multifamily housing, amending SRC 111.001, 112.015, 250.005, 400.005, .030, 510.005, 511.005, 512.010, 513.001, .005, .010, .015, 514.005, .010, .015, 515.005, .010, .015, 520.015, .020, .025, 521.005, .010, .015, 522.005, .010, .015, 523.005, .010, .015...